Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Due to Grade 19, Committee of Adjustment public hearings are being conducted virtually by electronic means through WebEx webinar and online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentation to the committee via WebEx webinar, which is moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. My name is Isaac Laluz and with me here today is Nazila Tarodi, Ms. Sankar, Mr. Kidd, and Mr. Khan. Participants who have registered in advance will be able to connect with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until your call down to speak. Staff assisting us today are Simon, who is the Deputy Secretary Treasurer, Erwin Brett, and Brandon Clapp. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this item, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute look at time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Members of the public and applicants are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bay, the Chipewa, the Hadnashoni, and the Wanda Peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations in Witi and Miti people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Section 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provision of the zoning bylaw, permission to extend or alter legal nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision on an application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because the Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email only. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Lookalapil Body known as T-Lab or, in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal known as OLT. However, the provincial government recently amended the Planning Act and generally removed the rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. As of November 28, 2022, only the appellant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and special persons and public bodies are only permitted to appeal the decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Hearing today as follows. I'll call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matters into committee for decision. Each speaker, including the appellant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I will comment when the five-minute mark is reached. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on an application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to the proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to receive a notice are informed of the changes. Then individuals, either in support or in opposition, will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has the chance to address only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken to committee for decision. Now, for this afternoon's session only, members and staff, any conflicts of interest to declare? No? Okay. We have one item here for deferral requests, and that item number 31. 4900 Bathurst Street, application number 31. And here we have... 31. This is Andrew Dales, application number 31, 4900 Bathurst. Andrew Dales, are you there?
I'm here, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
He's here? Hello, Andrew?
I'm here.
Okay. Could you please state your name? We need it to be recorded on the system. Your name and your address, please.
Sure. I'm Andrew Dales, 147 Liberty Street in Toronto, and I'm here on behalf of the owner.
Thank you. So, there is a request. Your request to deferral, could you please give us the reason why we're asking for deferral?
Yeah, sure. Over the past few days, we've become aware that several tenants in the building have submitted letters to the committee expressing some concerns with the proposed variances. Additionally, we are aware of a report from Transportation Services requesting a deferral for the purpose of providing them with an auto-turn diagram showing, you know, an appropriate turning movement.
Okay, that's sufficient. So, you're asking for deferral to address the concerns of the neighbors as well as transportation? That's fine.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, let's see the problem here. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 9 other people registered here on this application. We just have to ask them if they're okay with the deferral. So, Junior Mallory Trinidad, are you there? Not there. Thank you. Glenn Garcia Peralta, Glenn Garcia Peralta, are you there?
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Glenn, yeah. Glenn, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Chair.
Can you please state your name and address only for us?
Glenn Garcia Peralta, I live at 4900 Bathurst Street.
Thank you. So, you heard what's happening? The agent is asking for deferral? That means if we defer it today, we're not going to discuss it today. You're okay with that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Next is Glenn Garcia... Oh, no, that's him. The next is Alexander Rodriguez Manuel Rodriguez. Alexander or Manuel Rodriguez?
Yes, this is Alexander.
Yeah. Could you please state your name and address, please?
Alexander Rodriguez, 4900 Bathurst Street.
Okay, thank you. You're okay with the deferral?
Yes, it's fine.
Thank you. You'll be advised when it starts again. Next one is John Paul Roderick. Are you there? Okay. Mr. Roderick?
I'm okay with the deferral, and any chance that we know how long this will take before it's heard again?
First of all, could you please state your name and address for the record here to be registered?
Yes. John Paul Rodericks, 4900 Bathurst Street.
Thank you. There is a request for deferral, meaning if we defer it today, we're not going to discuss it. We'll discuss it when it comes again, and you'll be advised when it comes again.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anna Maria Peric and Sanja Peric. Anna Maria Peric?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I'm having some trouble unmute myself.
That's okay. Could you please state your name and address for the system here?
Sure. My name is Anna Maria Peric. I'm a tenant of 4900 Bathurst Street.
Thank you. And you heard what's happening? They're asking for deferral, which means if we approve it, we're not going to discuss it today. Is that okay?
I would prefer that they cancel the plans completely, but if deferral is my only option at this point, then I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Angelica Guarnizo, are you there? Or Steven Garzen?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Please state your name and address for us, please.
4900 Bathurst Street.
Thank you.
My name is Angelica Bogota.
Very good. Thank you. You're one step ahead of me.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Committee.
Good.
My name is Odeth Alvarez, and I reside at 4900 Bathurst Street.
Perfect. And you're okay with the deferral?
Mr. Chair, I will have to support my other tenant colleagues in the referral. However, I just want to put on the record that this has kind of put a little bit of financial hardship to all my other counterparts because it does place a pause in our work and personal life just to attend these hearings. If the hearing has to be deferred or the decision has to be deferred, I will welcome some advance notice. As I know that the notice for us to submit any electronic comments was given a very, very short from the deadline, so I would appreciate plenty of time for the next hearing so we can prepare and we can gather.
All right. Here, in this committee, we have no control on that. The staff is here, they can speak to it. What we do, if it's deferred, you'll be notified the same way you did this time, and then you will... Because if we defer it, we're not going to discuss it today. You want to know how long it takes for you to get the notification? Is that what it is?
I believe one of the issues, your Chair, it said that the notice to submit an electronic correspondence prior to this hearing, I was only aware of it two days before that...
I'll let the staff speak to it. Mr. Secretary Treasurer, could you please speak to that question?
Sorry, can you repeat that question, please?
Can you repeat the question?
It wasn't a question, it was just a concern. I just wanted to place it on the record that this notification for us to submit an electronic comments prior to the hearing was not given it a lot of consideration in terms of time. So, not only did I not make the deadline, and I don't want this to be an ongoing issue when we have to come back to this hearing again.
So, you received your hearing notice later than expected?
So, the notification of this hearing and any comments to be submitted electronically was planted in my building a few days before that deadline. So, it wasn't a big notice. As you can appreciate, some of us do have a work life and a personal life that we need to attend to, and most of us personally mean that I live at the end of the building and the access to the building is through the back. I was not aware of this notification being planted until I saw some other colleagues and I was made aware of it.
Okay, thank you. I'll take that and note it.
Yeah, so the staff will take it into your advice, and we understand that you should have enough time to be able to attend. Okay, so the staff will take it into your advice.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Odeth Alvarez, are you there?
That was me, your Chair.
Oh, that's you, I'm sorry. Again, Jim Hennessy, are you online? How about the next one? Sarah Ashdani. Sarah Ashdani, are you there?
My name is Sarah Ashdani.
Okay, can you please?
Of 4900 Bathurst Street.
Thank you. And do you hear what's happening?
Yes.
If we defer it, we're not going to discuss it today. You're okay?
Yes. I just have a quick question. I know that the applicant said that they want to defer it because of the concerns tenants brought up in the written submissions. Could the applicant let me know what that second reason was? Something about transportation?
We have a request here for the deferral, and the gentleman mentioned that they have... Yeah, deferred requests. Yeah, because the transportation is asking for a request for a deferral because they have to attend the questions with the transportation. The transportation will not allow the go-ahead until they meet with them, so they have to. Okay? So, that was one of the requests.
Okay.
So, that's...
Okay.
All we're saying here that if we defer it, we're not going to discuss it today. You will be advised when the time comes in. Okay?
Okay, that's fine with me. I just want to echo what the other tenant said, that if you could put a sign on the back of the building as well, that would be great for tenants. Thank you.
I don't know what that means, but that's okay. Do you know if he's online?
Jim Hennessy is present, Mr. Chair. However, we cannot unmute him.
We can't unmute him, huh? Okay, well, we're going to have to move, I guess. Okay, everybody spoke except one. We can't unmute him. So, members, we have requests here for a deferral to attend the neighbors' questions in addition to the transportation. Is he on? Okay, okay, we'll wait.
Hello, this is Jim Hennessy.
Yeah, hi. How are you?
Hi. Hello, Mr. Chair and committee members.
Okay.
I'm having trouble to get logged on.
That's okay. Just before that, could you please repeat your name and address so it can be recorded on the system?
Okay, yes, it's Jim Hennessy, 8 Kingsbridge Court.
Thank you. That's fine.
My building is adjacent to 4900.
Okay. And all we do here is we're asking because if we defer it today, we will not discuss it, and we'll discuss it when the time comes back again. So, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm fine with deferring it. I had a number of questions on it as well, but...
Yeah, we don't discuss any questions today. We will not entertain any question today on it. When we discuss it, when it comes back, we will discuss the whole thing, okay?
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members, we have a request for deferral to attend the questions to the neighbors and also the transportation. Ms. Sankar, can I have a motion, please?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, a motion to approve a deferral, signee die, to allow the applicant a chance to discuss with transportation and the residents.
Thank you. Second? Ms. Tarodi, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, sir, your application is unanimously approved, I mean deferred, and you'll be advised, you check with the staff when it's coming back for hearing.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, now we start all over. We'll start from the... This was deferred, and we'll start from the beginning. Item number 23, which is 570 Chaplain Crescent, application 23. And here we have Edward Brothers, are you there?
I'm here.
State your name and address for us, please.
Edward Brothers, 2191 Young Street, Suite 2708, M4S 388.
Thank you. So, we have here, this is an application for a front yard cabana, three variances, and forestry condition number two. Members, do we need a presentation here? No? Okay. Sir, we don't need a presentation. If you... We can go straight to the committee, but if you have any question, do you want to say something before?
I just noticed we have a forestry requirement, and we spoke to forestry, and there's no issue with the requirements that they're asking for.
Okay, all right. So, let's see. Members, any... If no question, can I have a motion then, please? Ms. Sankar, firsthand, go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I think this is a very straightforward application. I'll put forward a motion to approve this application with the conditions of forestry number two.
Thank you. I need a second. Ms. Tarodi, all in favor? Okay. Opposed? Mr. Khan is opposing. Okay, so your application is approved, subject to that forest condition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Application number 24, which is 42 Sandale Gardens, application number 24, and here we have Enzo Lochizano. Enzo Lochizano?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Enzo Locassano from HDWG, and I am the agent for this application.
Thank you. Thank you. Now I know how to pronounce two Cs.
Lochizano.
Lochizano. Okay.
No, that's for the Anglo population. For the rest of us, it's Lochizano.
That's what I said. I'm not Alglukano, so I'm okay. I said Lochizano. Okay. So, we have here in enclosed... This is for an enclosed portion, enclosed porch, and we have just one variance. Staff report, condition... Yeah, did you see the staff report where they say the...
Yes, I did.
Condition, the Torito, 0.47% of the total coverage will be limited to the main building only. You saw that?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Okay. So, coverage... Okay, so, members, do we... I don't have anybody else. Members, do we need the presentation here? No? Okay, sir, we don't need presentation. We only... We ask you, do you want to mention something before we move on to committee?
No, just to reinforce what the staff report says, the majority of the coverage is actually in the decks, one existing side deck and rebuilding of the rear deck, because the porch is already there, we're just enclosing the existing porch. So, the actual volume of the building is not increasing and has no impact to the stormwater management or green space.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay, so, that's it. There's nobody else here registered. Can I have a motion then, please? Mr. Khan? Mr. Khan first, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that. I move this application be approved, and the statement and the recommendation from the staff has been already stated by you, and the applicant is aware of that, so I move this application be approved.
Thank you. Second? Ms. Sankar, seconding, all in favor? Okay. Sir, your application is approved unanimously, subject to that condition.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Application 25, which is 211 Carmichael Avenue, and here we have Giorgio Lolo's. Giorgio Lolo's, are you there?
Mr. Chair, he is present, however, we are unable to unmute him at this time.
Okay, we'll move to the next one, and we come back to him, okay? Item number 26, which is 27 Swans Down Drive, application 26, and here we have Tay Rayuk. Tay Rayuk, are you there?
Hi, sir. It's Tay Ruk, planner for the owners of the property at 27 Swans Down Drive. My address is 18 Young Street.
Thank you. Okay, we have here, this is for new dwelling, seven variances. Staff report, asking only for a condition to build in accordance to the... Attached to the site plan. TRCA, they have no impact, no objections, and nine letters of support. And there is nobody else here listed. Members, do we need the presentation here? No? Okay. Sir, we don't need the presentation. If you have anything to add, we'll just move to committee.
No, sir. Just basically, this is a very straightforward proposal. The variants before you are pretty minor and appropriate for, given the size of the lot and the house that's being proposed. And in terms of the conditions of the planning staff, we have no issues with them, and TRCA, once again, you mentioned, no objections. So, we're happy with the conditions.
Thank you. Okay. Members, do I have a... Can I have a motion? Ms. Sankar? I'm sorry, Ms. Tarodi? Ms. Tarodi? Okay.
Yes. Yes, through you, through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application with only one staff condition, that the west side yard setback we develop in accordance with the site plan drawing attached to the report date of January 18, 2023, and that's my motion.
Thank you. Second, Ms. Sankar? Now it's Ms. Sankar? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, sir, your application is approved unanimously, subject to that condition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is 26? He's back, yeah? Okay. So, we go back to 25th, right? Okay. Mr. Giorgio Lolo's, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, Mr. Chair.
Okay, could you please state your name and address for us, please?
Giorgio Lolo's, 220 Duncan Mills Road.
Okay. So, we have here to legalize existing cabana, one variance only, and I have nothing else here. Members, do we need the presentation? No? Sir, we don't need the presentation. Do you want to add something before we move to committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only... I mean, the only... Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only, I mean, the only thing I would like to add is that the cabana itself, the only reason why right now it's actively part of the lot, coverage percentage of one point seven four, because it has a plumbing situation internally, it's well within the legal conformity if you didn't have that. So it's under a hundred square feet, so that's the only problematic situation that we have here.
You want to legalize it, yeah. Okay, all right, so.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion then, please? Ms. Sankar and Mr. Kit, both of them at the same time, which one wants? Can I have one hand and the other one? Oh, now we have three hands. Okay, can I have a motion there, please?
Okay, I'd like to put forward a motion.
Mr. Kit was first, okay.
Thank you, Mr.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel this is a minor variance and
That's it? Thank you?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I feel this is a minor var-
Okay, can I have a second, please? Ms. Sankar, seconding, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Unanimous. So, sir, your application is unanimously approved, all right?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And there is no, there is no conditions. That's number twenty-five, twenty-six, gone. Twenty-seven, gone. All right, so application number twenty-seven, which is seventy-seven Bishop Avenue, and that is Lindsay Bruce, are you there? Lindsay Bruce? Okay.
Yes, sorry, this is Joel Tanner with the Office of Simple Design Studio, on behalf of Lindsay Bruce.
Thank you. And your own address is what is?
Same address, so this is for seventy-seven Bishop, our project, our office address is fifteen Colburn Street, Hamilton.
Fifteen Colburn, that's the one I have here. Okay, thank you. And here we have, this is a new dwelling. We had fifteen variances, including three stories. Staff report is asking to refuse variance number four and number six. Transportation is okay with conditions. One letter of objection and counselor, counselor letter, asking to refuse the application. Now we have variance number four is for the third story. Number six is for the landscape. Okay, so, and we also
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to let you know that the staff support was amended. We did have discussions with planning staff yesterday, and they resubmitted their paperwork yesterday. There was a miscommunication between the zoning officer and planning staff in terms of the definition regarding the three-story, and so staff are now in support. We then took that letter to the counselor, Councilor Cheng's letter came back today, and they are no longer against the application. They've removed their letter, and they are in support of the application. Now, town planning staff are still against item variance number six, variance number six.
Can you just please hold like this? We have, we have here another person to speak, so take your five minutes and make your presentation and say whatever you want. You can include that in your presentation, five minutes.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so we did contact the planning staff during the design process to ensure that we were designing within the built form of the surrounding neighborhood. There are several two-story dwellings in behind this proposed new two-story dwelling. It's an existing bungalow that we're going to be tearing down and rebuilding. If we're looking at the slide deck, I'm not sure if we could pull that up, Mr. Chair. Sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if they're going to pull up the presentation or if I should just walk through the slides.
No, please, you have five minutes, use it as you please.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, so we're looking for requested variance number one is a slight increase to the overall covered porch. So, sorry, I'm on slide number four, my apologies. Sorry, just back up one page. So requested variance number one is just related to the projection of the rear deck into the rear yard, allowable is two point five, we're seeking four point two five five. Now, we did recess that porch so that it doesn't completely dominate the rear facade and better embrace the overall zoning capabilities of the lot. Going to the next slide, variance number two. There is an ever so slight increase on total max building length from seventeen meters permitted to seventeen point six proposed. Again, in keeping with the neighborhood. Variance number three is related to the max side of the exterior walls. We tried to pull the soffit down as low as possible and embrace, you know, trying to really squat the building envelope, but we are looking for a slight increase on the east and on the west side, from seven point five up to eight oh five and eight oh eight. On the next slide, which is variance number four, again, this is where there was a slight discrepancy from town planning staff. The reason it's considered a three-story dwelling is because of the location of the mudroom. The mudroom is a very small fifty-two square foot space, mostly consisting of stairs. And so because of that tiny little mudroom, to give ease of access into the home from the garage, that is what is triggering the third floor and nothing else. So in our opinion, it is very minor in nature and still in keeping with the overall intent of the bylaw. Moving on to slide number eight, variance number five. We are looking for a front yard landscape deviation. The allowed, the required is sixty percent. We're proposing fifty-four point six two. This is a very busy street in the mornings and in the evening zone, so what we're trying to do is introduce this hammerhead into the front yard in order to increase the safety not only of the occupants of seventy-seven Bishop, but also of the neighboring homes during high-peak traffic times. That is the driver on requested variance five. Leading on to slide number nine, which is requested variance number six. This is the variance that we are happy to remove and obliged by the minimum fifty percent. So we are okay removing this from our list of variances. Moving on to slide number ten, which consists of requested variance seven, eight, and nine. Again, this pertains to the last slide as well, when we were talking about the hammerhead. So hammerhead turnaround is not permitted on this lot. Again, we're really trying to increase the safety of this particular property. The clients have owned it for a number of years and have some very close calls with vehicles flying down the road. That also leads into the next list of variances on the next slide, number eleven, ten, eleven, and twelve. Again, these are variances related to that hammerhead, a very, very smidge increase on the max width of a hammerhead to three point oh five meters. The overall edge-to-edge increase to five point three four. So again, it is really about a safety concern here on variances ten, eleven, and twelve. On the next slide, we're looking at variances number thirteen and fourteen. This is related to a slight deviation in the side yard setbacks. Required is one point eight meters on both sides. We are coming in at one point six seven and one point six nine on the westerly and on the easterly side lot lines. Moving on to the next slide, variance fifteen is regarding overall building height. So the allowable is eight point eight meters, and we are just over that, eight point nine seven. What we really try to do is step and profile the front elevation massing to really create a nice piece of architecture for the street presence that doesn't dominate the overall street facade. And I think we did that really well from a design standpoint to not necessarily negatively impact the streetscape with requested variance number fifteen. Again, it seems like a lot that we are asking for here, but I think there's a, you know, a beautiful piece of architecture that's been put together. You know, it is in keeping with what's happening in the neighborhood. We had some great discussions with planning staff, which is what led to them supporting the variance list. So again, open the table to any questions Mr. Chair or the committee have this afternoon. Happy to answer them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so, yeah, I have, in my record, it shows, it shows like the the number, variance number four that they originally asked for refusal was a third story, but it was due to the mudroom, which is okay with the staff now. It looks like it just was a technical thing. And the next one, which is number six for landscape, I didn't have a note here, maybe I missed it. Could you tell us about that a little bit?
Yeah, I believe if I'm not mistaken, that staff were not in support of variance number six. We're okay removing variance number six and dividing by that minimum fifty percent reg for that rear yard.
Oh. What you're doing about number six, you're removing it?
We're happy to remove it, yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So number six, you remove it, okay. Yeah, that answers all their question, because number three, number four, they were okay with this, based on the evaluation of the mudroom, which was on the, it looks like it's on the first floor, and it includes three stories. Okay, so we'll see who's we having now, twenty-seven. We have here Sayed Ahmed, are you there?
I am, sir.
Okay, can you please state your name and address for us?
Sure, Sayed Zaki Ahmed, seventy-seven Bishop Avenue.
And tell us, please, what's your concern about, just a second, you're not the agent, are you?
No, the agent was Joel Tanner, who just
I know, I know, it's marked here, the agent, I know why they showed that. Okay, so please tell us what's your concern here.
Yeah, we, as Joel mentioned, we are in agreement to remove variance number six and going ahead with the rest of it.
Oh. Okay. So could you please repeat, who are you, Mr. Ahmed? Are you with the owner here? You're speaking for the application or you're against it?
I'm for the application.
Okay, all right, all right, because I have it here listed as opposing. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think he said it. Mr. Ahmed, can you please state your address, your own address?
Sure, Sayed Zaki Ahmed, seventy-seven Bishop Avenue, Toronto, Ontario, M two M one Z five.
Yeah, I had it here as the owner, but he said, okay. Yeah. Okay, and now we have another one, Robert Wixfield? Robert Wixfield, yeah, is he on? He was. Okay, Mr. Wixfield, are you in?
I am here, yes.
Okay, can you please state your name and address and tell us what your concern here?
My name is Robert Wexler. My address is twenty-seven eighty A Young Street. I don't have any concerns. I'm just here in support of the application, and I've got no issues with it at all.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so that's it. Okay, members, we have the two listed here are in support of the application. Any questions? If there is no questions, can I have a motion then, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's quite a moment of correspondence here anyways. I conclude that Transportation Services has no objection, and staff in their letter after January twenty-sixth has raised variance four and six as objection, and later on amended to in their letter of February one, that was yesterday, and they were satisfied with variance number four. Now, variance number six has been removed, so I understand there is no more obstruction in the way to say that this application be approved.
Thank you. Okay, so number six removed and the application is approved. Can I have a second there, please? Ms. Sankar, seconding, all in favor? All in favor? All in favor? Okay, I don't see the other two. Okay, I have two, three, four. Thank you. Okay, sir, your application is approved, subject to only that removal of your number six.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, Committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number twenty-eight. Application number twenty-eight, which is two Stradern, application number twenty-eight. And this is, we have here Lauren Rose, are you there?
I am here.
Okay, please, please state your name and address for the records here.
Sure, Lauren Rose, I'm an architect, three eighty-eight Spadina Road.
Thank you. We have here, this is a new two-story dwelling, just two variances. Staff report is just condition to develop per east and, per east and front elevation drawings, and there is nothing more here. Now, because we have a couple of people registered here, we need a very small presentation. So you can take your five minutes and tell us what's your, what's your presentation.
Sure, Chair, members of the committee, this is an application that was before you before. We received a building permit in March of last year. When we started excavation, we found out that there was a high water table. So the reason we're back here is that we had to raise the basement two feet or point six, two meters. And as a result, that triggered two new variances under the zoning bylaw. What I understand from the examiner is that actually only one is really, number one is really needed today, but it should, rather than the permitted ten meters, it should be eleven meters, but because this was submitted before the end of November, on November twenty-second, we, the revisions to the bylaw that came into place are not yet applicable. So variance two is the old bylaw, which is no longer in place, but according to the examiner, we still have to ask for them because it came in before the change. I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we have here Jack Fong, are you there? Jack Fong? Is he online?
Mr. Chair, I don't see a Jack Fong online.
No, he's not in, okay, so we'll remove him. How about Zaki Ahmed? It looks like he's the owner. Zaki Ahmed, are you there?
He's not the owner.
I don't know, it said here owner.
Perhaps this is a different application, because I didn't think we had any opposition.
Twenty-eight? No, none of them are there, huh? No, no, that's the same one, it said here, I guess there is no, so here for this one, we have, we have Lauren Rose. Is there anybody else on this line here? No? So this Zach Fong, you don't know who is it? He's not present, okay, okay. All right, so nobody else is present, just the just the applicant. And we have here, as we mentioned, it's it's just two variances, and you heard the presentation. Any question, Ms. Sankar?
No, I'm ready for a motion, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Through you, I think that this is pretty self-explanatory. I understand the circumstances for why this has occurred and what's happening. And given that staff doesn't have a problem with it, and there's no one to speak to this as well, I'm going to make a motion to approve this application and make it subject to the January twenty-sixth staff report, and that the building height be developed in accordance with the front and east elevation drawings submitted to committee. And that's my motion, thank you.
Thank you, that's all there is. And second, can I have a second, Ms. Tarodi, seconding, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. So, sir, your application is unanimously approved, subject to that staff condition.
Thank you.
Okay, application number twenty-nine, which is which is twenty-four, twenty-four Burkenshaw Crescent, application number twenty-nine. And here we have Brenda Eisen, are you there?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, this is Brenda Eisen, agent for the applicant at ninety-one Tyco's Drive.
Thank you. And, uh, here we have like, uh, it's a two-story dwelling, two variances. Uh, just a second, Burkenshaw. Is an addition, an rear deck, five variances, staff report recommends refusal, oh yeah, and six letters of support. Let me go back again. Twenty-four Burkenshaw, Burkenshaw Crescent, application number twenty-nine, Brenda Eisen. Yeah, I don't know, did you see any, uh, did you see the staff report which asks for, uh, refusal?
I am aware of the staff report, it came in very late, less than twenty-four hours before this hearing, so I was able to, um, review it quickly, but there's, there wasn't really any time to, to do anything about it.
So why don't you make your presentation, because I don't have, I don't have anybody else listed here. Make your presentation and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, um, I submitted a package of supporting, oh wow, thank you, that was very fast. Um, with this application today, we are proposing a renovation to an existing bungalow at twenty-four Burkenshaw Crescent. It is a top-up to create a two-story dwelling on top of the first existing and also to make a few modifications to the bungalow for greater accessibility and function. Today, we're seeking five variances to the bylaws and in the coming slides, I'm going to go through them one by one. Uh, next slide, please. The first variance is for the front yard setback. Um, the diagram on the top shows the existing footprint of the bungalow and the existing front yard setback is six point two-five meters. We're proposing to widen the existing vestibule at the front and add a little bit more floor area to the front for a more functional entrance and mudroom. Everything that's being proposed as new construction on the ground floor is shown in blue on the lower diagram, so as you can see, it's very minimal. Um, and in addition, the second floor addition is proposed setback from the ground floor, that's the area shown dashed. And so the frontmost point of the proposed second floor is setback at eight point oh five meters from the front property line, which is further back than the existing bungalow. Um, next page, please. The second variance is for the lot coverage. Um, the existing lot coverage, again in the upper diagram, is thirty-six percent and we're proposing a lot coverage of thirty-seven point nine one, so it's a very small increase of less than two percent, um, which is comprised of the small floor area being added and also primarily for a lower uncovered wood deck that's being proposed. Um, and I'd like to clarify, this deck is going to have full drainage below, it is not hardscape. Um, you know, it's, it, in terms of coverage, I know that's often the concern and, and the water is going to drain through this deck. Um, next, please. For the side setback variance, which is the third variance, um, we are not changing the side setback of the house itself. The existing house is setback one point one eight meters and we're proposing to build the second story directly on top of the first and maintain this existing setback. Um, for the rear deck, however, we're proposing to square off the shape of the deck, which is different from the existing. Um, and this is what's triggering the variance at that very tip corner there. Um, it's actually one point one two meters to that corner point only. Um, the way this variance is written is a little bit confusing. The corner of the deck encroaches zero point six nine meters into the side setback, but it is setback one point one two meters from the lot line. Either way, it's just that really tippy little corner there that kind of comes in because it's no longer parallel to the lot line. Um, next, please. The fourth variance is also for the deck encroachment. Um, there was some discrepancy here between how the bylaw was written and how it's being interpreted under the new bylaw, um, by our examiner. So our examiner is interpreting the length of the deck from the rear wall of the house, uh, not the actual encroachment into the rear yard setback. So the total length of the deck is five point eight meters from the rear wall of the house, which is the number that you see in the variance, but it's actually encroaching very little into the rear setback. Um, the main point that I'm trying to illustrate in these diagrams is that the proposed deck is encroaching less into the rear setback than the existing deck, so it's actually a reduction from the existing condition. Um, and also worth noting here is that we're proposing a privacy screen to mitigate any overlook issues and I understand that this deck encroachment kind of comes from, um, you know, the desire not to have people overlook. Um, the other thing I want to point out regarding this variance is that this variance gets triggered when the deck is higher than one point two meters, um, above grade. Uh, when measured from established grade, it's only actually point six nine meters above and if it's measured from average grade, it's one point one two meters above. Um, the examiner is requiring us to measure from the lowest point, I believe, um, of the grade where it hits the deck, so that brings it to one point two five meters, which brings it above and triggers the variance, but again, um, I don't believe there to be overlook issues and if there would be, um, we are proposing a privacy screen there, which is already shown on the elevations. Um, next slide, please, which is the final and fifth variance regarding the building height. Um, the permitted building height here is eight meters and we're proposing a slight increase to that at eight point four meters, um, which I believe to be well within the character of the existing neighborhood and significantly shorter than many of the newer homes. Also, as I mentioned earlier, the second floor is actually setback from the first. Um, so the height will be felt even less from the street, it's, um, sort of pleasing volume so that it feels, you know, definitely within what's intended by the zoning bylaws. Um, in summary, we're adding very little to the ground floor footprint of the existing house and most of these variances are almost negligible if you compare them to the existing condition and the existing bungalow, rather than comparing them to, um, the bylaws. And since this is a renovation to an existing home, I believe that it should be, uh, what's already there should be considered when making your decision. I truly believe that these variances meet all of the four tests and that they're extremely minor in nature. Um, and I'd also like to reiterate that we have letters of support from both of the adjacent neighbors as well as for other neighbors in close proximity. That's the end, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Excuse me, I think we got it and you passed your five minutes. So, uh, let's see if the members have any question. Okay, so, uh, members, any question? We don't have anybody else registered here? So, just us, so you have any question? Miss Sataro D? Miss Sataro D?
To you, Mr. Chair, I have no question, but I'm ready to put forward a motion.
Yeah, if you have a motion, any, anybody, anybody else has any question? No, so please go ahead with the motion.
Okay. So to you, Mr. Chair, I was, um, before the, before I listened to the presentation, I have some concern regarding variance number one, two, and, um, one, two, and then, um, after listening to presentation, I've been convinced that this is, uh, this is minor and it's a lot of those, um, um, numbers are due to existing situation. Therefore, I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application with, with no condition.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, no forestry, no, with no condition.
No, no, there is no, there's no, okay. Uh, second?
There's no forestry.
Thank you, second? Mr. Ked, seconding, all in favor? Opposed? Mr. Khan is opposing and, uh, the, the application is approved. Uh, your application is approved and, uh, that's it, there is no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Item thirty, which is one, Sunbeam Avenue, application number thirty, and here we have Aida Evangelista. Uh, could, are you there, Mr. Evangelista?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair members, uh, I'm back.
Yeah, that's why you said, see you in the afternoon.
Aida Evangel.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, here we have, uh, yeah, I know, we know, you know who you are, but for every syst, for every application, we needed to be registered on the system, just please state the name and address.
No worries. Yes, Mr. Chair, Aida Evangelista, fifty-three Bentworth Avenue, Toronto.
Thank you, so this is for a new dwelling, we have eight variances, transportation is okay with conditions and, uh, forestry condition number one. So, give us a very, uh, small presentation, please. Maximum five minutes.
Um, uh, yes, Mr. Chair, actually, uh, before we start, because we did work with, uh, planning and we have, uh, made some changes, um, some minor, um, changes to the application, so if I can just go through them very quickly, um, with you.
Please go ahead.
So variance number, yes, variance number one, the east side yard setback will now be one point five four meters.
Okay.
Okay, um, the east, uh, will be now read one point six three meters.
Which one is that? What variance?
That's number three.
Number three, okay.
Number three, the proposed east will now project one point six three meters.
Okay.
Variance number four.
Yep.
The architectural feature will now only, only encroach one point four six meters.
Okay.
And variance number five, our coverage is now thirty-nine percent.
Okay, thirty-five, oh boy. Yeah, it was thirty-nine point thirty-three, you're removing just thirty-three, okay?
Right.
Okay, so please go.
Yes, so as I'm, as, uh, as I mentioned, Mr. Chair members, um, uh, we, we worked quite closely with planning uh, and planning, as you see, uh, there is no planning report, they are in support of the changes that we have made. Uh, this is a corner lot and what we're proposing is a two-story home. On my, um, in my photos, you'll see that, um, I've outlined what the variances are, which we have now modified for. And, uh, variance number six, uh, the proposed vehicle access, um, transportation is okay with this. Um, this, um, in my respectful opinion, this is, um, this is a very modest, uh, addition to this neighborhood, as you'll see from the photos that I submitted. This is an area that is undergoing, uh, reinvestment and regeneration with many of the, uh, bungalows being turned into, uh, two-story homes. So the home that we are proposing does, um, have a lot of character, uh, many of the characteristics in this home do, uh, match what is in the neighborhood. Uh, the side yard setbacks also are very characteristic to, um, all the new homes that are being built. It aligns, uh, being on the corner, it is setback so, and, so that it doesn't obstruct any views because it is a, a T intersection. And, uh, what I respectfully submit that, um, what we're proposing, uh, does meet the four tests and the OP and, um, it forms a, um, a very gentle, modest, modest intensification to this neighborhood. I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Uh, members, we don't have anybody else on the, uh, recorded here, any question? Uh, you got the changes? And, uh, did you record the changes or you want them again? Miss Ankar, did you have a question? No, okay, any, any question to, uh, to the applicant here? If there is no question, then I need a motion, please. Mr. Ked? Mr. Ked? We see your moves, we don't hear you. We don't hear.
How's that?
Oh, now it's okay, so start, start from the.
Yeah. Yes, I, I, I think the, uh, application as amended is, uh, 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 minor in nature and I'd like to put forward a, uh, motion to accept the application. Now, uh, 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 those, uh, changes were read into the record, do you want me to go over those again or?
Well, I, I have them and if the staff have them, we don't have to, but if you repeat them, it won't hurt. Number one is.
Okay, uh, number one, the proposed east, uh, side yard setback is.
One point five four, yeah?
At one point five four. The, um, uh, variance number three, the proposed east side yard east project, one point six three meters. Uh, variance number four, the proposed architectural feature approaches one point four meters into the required east, uh, side yard, uh, um. Variance number five, the proposed lot coverage is thirty-nine, uh, percent of the lot area.
Right.
Um, I'd like that, uh, uh, make that, uh, uh, subject to the conditions of the, uh, planning staff report that the proposal be developed substantially in accordance with the revised site plan drawings, um, a date stamped as, uh, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three and attached as attachment one to this report. I'll make it subject to forestry condition number two and also, um, subject to the, uh, conditions, uh, w- one through four, uh, contained in the, uh, uh, Transportation Services Report dated January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
That's it.
Um, you mentioned, uh, four, uh, there is number four, you said one point four meters. I believe she said one point four six.
Yes, one point four six.
Thank you. Thank you, that's it, okay, so, uh, second, do you have a second, Miss Sataro, do seconding? All in favor? All in favor, unanimous, okay, Mr. Evangelista is unanimously approved based on those changes and those conditions, okay?
Thank you and have a great day.
You too. Number thirty-two, which is twenty-three Michael Drive, application number thirty-two. And here we have Sayed Ahmed, are you there? Sayed.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Hi, could you please state your name and address, please?
My name is Sayed Ahmed from Lifestyle Sand Room and presenting twenty-three Michael Drive.
Thank you, alright, so we have, um, um, we have here, this is for a sand room addition. Uh, three variances, minor, there is nothing here, nobody else is registered. Members, do we need a presentation here? No, okay, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Sayed, uh, we need, we don't need a presentation. Do you want to add something before we move to committee?
No, sir, I'm quite happy with what we have presented already and really appreciate it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion then, please, Mr. Mr. Khan? Mr. Khan, go ahead.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a straightforward, uh, uh, application, uh, there are three va, uh, variances and I see that, uh, this is minor and should be approved.
Thank you, second? Miss Ankar, seconding, all in favor? Thank you, unanimous, okay, sir, your application is approved, there is no conditions.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Okay, we'll have, uh, we'll have a short break, uh, how about ten minutes, please? Ten-minute break, okay, recess. Want to say, want to say hello to? Want to say hello? Want to say hello?
Was that the first time you met the pastor?
Where's that? Where is Mr. Manituba? Which one? Yeah, you're right, thirty-three, yeah. Yeah, next one is thirty-three. Okay. So as long as they make the changes on the floor, it's okay? Okay. So that's thirty-three? Oy vey, oy vey.
Oy vey.
Oy vey is mere.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, uh. Okay, number thirty-three, uh, thirty-three is at York View. And Shiraz Kevorkian, is she, is she there?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and the committee's member.
Hi, is that, could you please state your name and address, please?
My name is Shiraz Kevorkian. I'm the agent for, uh, the client at seventy-eight York View Drive in North York. I address it 10th Four Seasons Place, Torono.
Okay, now, we have here some notes, uh, from the staff that you, um, you're gonna make some changes and they're okay with this. Could you please give us a presentation and tell us what you're doing, what kind of changes you're making?
Absolutely. So, uh, we're dealing with three variances, two for the two side setbacks and one for the building length. And, uh, we had the chance to work with the city planners in the committee, uh, planning in North York District regarding these variances after applying to the committee. And they advised us to increase, uh, the right setback from the original proposed 1.2 and we agreed to increase it to 1.27. Also, we agreed with them to update the left side setback to be the same as the right side setback as the submitted revised site plan.
Okay, so just to be clear, could you please state the various number and what you're changing it to?
So the first variance, it's, uh, the, the right setback. It's, uh, it's, uh, changed from 1.2. Sorry, the, the first, it's the left, uh, left setback. It changed from 1.35 to 1.27.
Okay. And the next?
The second is the right. Sorry.
You're changing it from one, three, seven, three-five to 1.27?
Yes.
Okay, what else?
So for the next, uh, the second one, it was proposed as 1.2 and we changed it to 1.27.
Okay.
And for the third, we're keeping the same length of the building.
You're keeping it. Okay, now. Now, the only thing I don't understand is that, yeah, the, the only thing I don't understand, the first one, you said you're changing it from 1.35 to 1.27. You mean you make it worse?
I mean, it was, uh, only discussed with the, with the planners for the right side to increase the 1.2 a little bit. And then we agreed to push the entire building and keep, uh, the same, uh, consistency between the right and left side. And then they agreed on the 1.27.
I see.
So that's why that's, that's triggered the, the first that it's, uh, reduced instead of increased.
So if I, if I understood correctly what you're saying, because you changed number two to 1.27, you had to push the other side and the other side became smaller to 1.27? Eh? No. What's, uh, Steph, what, what?
Through you, Mr. Chair. If he were to do that, we'd have to send out a new notice.
Yeah, we can't, we can't.
We would have to send out a new notice. You can't make the variance worse.
Let me get, you see what happens, sir? When we, when we advertise the, uh, notice of notice, uh, to the public, if you, if we make it better, it's okay. If you make it worse, we have to recirculate it. Doesn't make sense. We can't make it less. If we only limit 1.35, we can move ahead with the application. If we want to make it worse, then we, we, the, the notification we send to the public is still, is, is invalid. We have to change it.
I mean, we're, we didn't try to make it worse. We just, uh, discussed with the planning department on the right side.
Yeah, what you discuss it with the department is fine. The question is, yes, we're making it worse. The setback was 1.35, which we advertised to all the public and now you're saying you want to make it to 1.27, which we cannot, which we cannot, uh, process it like this. If you want, we may have to refuse it. We'll see what the members are saying. If you want to insist on 1.27, we're gonna have to make our decision.
I mean, I can keep it 1.37, 3.5, that's fine.
If you want to, if you want to keep it.
It was just, uh, agreed with the planner, but we can keep it 1.35. I think the client is, uh, is okay with that.
Yeah, if you want to keep it to 1.35, we can process with the application, yes. So.
Sure, let's keep, uh, the first one as 1.3.
Three-five and the second one, you're changing to 1.27, right?
Correct.
Okay, alright. Okay, uh, there is no, uh, there is nobody else here listed for this application. We're gonna move to committing. Members, we have, uh, we have the application here. Uh, there are three variances. Uh, is the only change, is changing number two to 1.27. And the rest is okay and we have nobody, uh, nobody else here. Do you, uh, do you want another presentation or we move on? You're okay with that? Okay, alright, so sir, we, uh, we, we're just gonna move on for a decision. Uh, do you want to add something? Because we don't need the full presentation.
No, I'm okay.
Thank you. Members, question, motion? Uh, Mr. Ked, I had both of them at the same time, so Mr. Ked, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm gonna put forward a motion to, uh, accept the application uh, with the revision to, uh, variance number two that the proposed east side yard setback, uh, is to be 1.27. is to be one point two-seven meters, and I'll make it subject to forestry condition number one and two.
Thank you very much, and second, Mister Khan's seconding, only in favor. Opposed? Mister Taro disopposing. Okay, sir, your application is approved, subject to the change you made and condition to forest.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number thirty-four, which is forty-three Little Boulevard, application number thirty-four, and here we have Fidenzio Salvatore. Fidenzio Salvatore, are you there?
Hello?
Yeah. Could you please state your name?
Hello? Yes, I, I, Fidenzio. Oh, I'm getting a lot of, a lot of echo.
Your, your system is, excuse me, your system is echoing. You should please close, close the other, if you have any, I think it's from here. It's from him. It's from them, yeah? It's from them, yeah? Yeah, you're, sir, your, your system is echoing, could you please close all the other, all the other connections you've got?
What? Sorry?
Well, your, your, your system is echoing, and we have a double echoing here. Echoing here.
How about now?
Let's say, yeah, I think it's better, thank you. No, still. No, still.
Ah, I'm not sure what I'm doing wrong. I'm not sure what I'm doing wrong, sir.
I don't know what you're using there. I don't know what you're using there.
Can you hear me?
We hear you, but we hear ourselves too.
Mister Chair, if Mister Salvatore could log out of any other devices that he's on, the one that he's talking on, leave, or he can log out and come back and we can move on to the next one.
Okay, sir, could you please log out? And, oh, now it looks okay. Oh, okay, sir, could you log out and, and log in again, and in the meantime, we'll, we'll call you back again. So we'll move on to the next one. Could you remind me on this thirty-four, please? Okay, thirty-five? No, this is, yeah. We're into a thirty-five, seven-nine-seven Millwood Road, application thirty-five, and here we have Hamia Ashimebody. Mia Ashimebody, are you there? No, you know, it said agent did not register. Hamia?
Mister Chairman, can you hear me? Yes?
Yeah?
Hello, Mister Chairman and members of committee, my name is Hamia Agayemabadi. My address is fifty-two thirteen Toronto.
Thank you.
I'm the architect and representing the client, yeah.
Okay, thank you, we have here, this is for a new two-story, new two-story building, and we have ten variances, staff report has conditions, and we have seventeen letters of objection, and we got here a lot of people registered to speak against it, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, six people. So could you please make a presentation, and we'll call the other people, see what their concern is?
Sure. Thank you so much. Before we are starting that one, when, when you refer to the zoning notice, the ten notice changed to eight. The updated zoning notice was with eight variances, which is, which is on the website as well.
I'm sorry, we, all we have here, we have the, yeah, we have the thinking that it said here, ten variances. Could you tell us if you're making any changes and what the changes are?
Sure. Can, can we go through the variances, because the new one, I can pull that up and go through. The new one is having the, so if I go through yours, I think that would be easier. So can you just scroll up to, so I see the one, two, three of that? Yeah. The number one is the same, number two, the number two is, is gone. And number three is the same.
Excuse me, what you mean is on, you're not, you're not touching it, right?
Yeah, like, it's still, it's still, yeah, it is in the news, in the revision.
Okay, tell us only the ones you wanna change, the number of the variance and what you're changing it to.
Okay. Number two variance, we're changing that to zero point nine.
Oh, yeah? It's zero point?
And, yes, so there is no variance on that anymore. And if I can, if you can scroll down, please? The maximum, the main wall height of the building, main wall height
What, what very, excuse me, sir, could you please cooperate with us?
Number, number.
Excuse me, could you cooperate?
Yeah, number six.
The number of the variance and what you're changing it to?
Yes, number six is technically the one that staff put, put the condition on, so it's technically changed to the, to whatever staff is saying.
Without explanation, just tell us what you're changing it to. Give us a number.
No, okay, number six, number, number six is changing to eight for the flat roof.
Eight zero zero?
Yes.
Eight point zero zero, okay, next.
And if you can scroll down, please? Well, that one is the same setback, so everything else is the same.
Okay, so, so the only change you make in number six? Did you have another one?
Number six and number, no, that was, that was the one in respect to the projection of the eve, that one is resolved as well. So we change that to zero point nine.
Zero point nine?
Number, number two, if I'm not wrong.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so, so the only changes you made is number two changed to point, zero point nine, and number six is changed to, changed to eight point zero zero?
Yes, in, in general, like, if you look into the variances, most of them are repeating themselves, and it's technically, in respect to the setback, side setback of the project, GFA and the coverage, yeah.
Okay, the projection of one point two is changes to point nine, okay, so.
Nine. Yeah.
No, no, point two, uh, the, the variance number two is changing it to point nine? What's that?
Correct.
Yeah. Oh, now you're right.
So means variance number two eliminated?
Hold a second.
Yes.
Hold a second, sir, you're changing, you're changing number two to point, to zero point nine?
So it's eliminated, correct.
Eliminated, okay, thank you. That's, that's a good, okay, so the only change is number six to eight zero, eight point zero zero. So please make your presentation, because we have here, we have here a lot of people to speak, and we got to move on, please.
Sure, if we can go to the presentation. So just to give a quick story of what's happening, the main project was to make a major renovation, which was on the existing building, which was zero point five meter from the lot line on the west side of the project. After working on that and then getting a permit for the underpinning, we realized that it's even better to go for the new, new building, so we can add more space to that side instead of being that close to the neighbor. So we, we redid the project, we changed that to zero point nine, and then we went for the two-story and a half. If you can go to the second, to the second slide, please. So here, as you can see, the site is technically aligned with the street and it's not perpendicular to that. For that reason, buildings are looking ahead, like, a little bit more closer to a street compared to the one on the east side, correct? So they take, anyhow, at some point in the morning, the building will shade the one on the west side, and afternoon is gonna shade the one on the east side, no matter what happens, because of the way they are located. So if you go to the next slide, please. As you can see, technically, this, this was taken at eleven-thirty recently, and since they are sort of on the east side, west side, we are not blocking each other's light, main light that we are getting during the day, it's been eleven to two-thirty-three. At the, before and after that, it's a star shadowing. There is one building behind on the other street, which is seventy-four Tenner Road, I think they already started to talk as well, which is technically shading all the backyards of all three buildings, which is shown on the image C. Our neighbor on the west side, image B, is the one that we were close to, and if you wanted to go with the major renovation, we had to be that close to them and go up. That's why we moved it instead of zero point four-five to zero point nine. If you can go to the next slide, please. So here, we did a very basic shadow study to have an understanding on how and when we are shading our neighbors. This is the proposed shading, the proposed project. As you can see, around nine, the sun start like, the ray of sun start shedding on the building on the west side, and around two, the shade start to cover the east side. And if you can go to the next slide, please? So this one is a proposed design, that based on the angles, we figure what time and how we are shading and the neighbors, and next slide, please? That one was in comparison to the one if we do, so now we have the setback of zero point nine. If we had the setback of one point two, two meter, which is ten twenty meter more than what we have now, this, in terms of setback, what we will see is like each neighbor will get seven minutes of sunlight, more than what we are proposing now. So technically, we're shading them for seven minutes, more than what, if we would follow the setback as one point two meter. And we can, can we go to this next slide? And that's in comparison to the one that if we would do the major renovation, they, especially the one on the west side would not get, like, that wouldn't change anything. Again, for the one on the east side, they would get seven minutes more of the sunshine. And then next slide, please? So we just, since we realized that it's kind of very important for neighbors to understand how this building is sitting in the neighborhood, we are just putting that in a scale to make them understand in comparison to the one on the west and all of the other neighbors on the west side, which are two-story, we are not really that huge. The main reason, if you can go to the next slide? And the next one, please? The main reason for the height of the wall that we are having is because of that roof, which is asymmetrical. If you can go to the next slide, I can show it even better. Yeah, you see that part that we are showing? That's the main reason our main wall height is increased, is because it's symmetrical. And that's by definition how they calculate the main wall height. It is not that we are trying to, hugely, it's just reasoning of the way it's designed, and we have a green roof on the other side. I think my time is up. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, okay, yeah, you're finished, you're, yeah, you're, you're five minutes.
My time is over.
Five minutes is over, now we're gonna be listening to the other people and we come back to you, okay? All right, so the next?
Yes, sure.
Okay, we have here Michael Kerr, are you there? Michael Kerr?
Hello?
Hi, could you please state your name?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, your name and your address, please?
Good. Michael Kerr, twenty-three Bestborough Drive, Toronto.
Thank you, so tell us what's your concern here?
Thank you and good late afternoon. I'm making these submissions personally and on behalf of my wife Susan Koish, who resides at twenty-three Bestborough as well. As our written submissions made clear, the proposed new build is the antithesis of good urban planning, particularly for the community of Leeside, which is an historic planned community, and which has remained vibrant and cohesive for over a century. This application should be rejected. Firstly, it is not minor. We're not closing in a porch or solving some small encroachment. The owner is using the minor variance legislation to circumvent the zoning, which together with the official plan are designed to keep the city as livable and vibrant as possible. And that official plan recognizes the importance of neighborhoods, it's emphasized repeatedly. So on that level, this application fails. But secondly, and equally importantly, why was there no attempt to have this building conform to and reinforce the build environment? That's what chapter four of the plan is designed for. It's designed to prevent neighborhoods from being treated exactly the way this appellant seeks to treat Leeside. Maximum size equals maximum rent. Who cares about the neighbors or the neighborhood? Well, chapter four of the official plan does. The language and intent of that legislation is perfectly clear, and let me quote one sentence. Proposed development within a neighborhood will, and I add in parentheses, that is mandatory language. It does not leave discretion in the decision-maker. Proposed development within a neighborhood will be materially consistent with the prevailing, and I emphasize that word because so does chapter four and in particular policy five. It will be material, materially consistent with the prevailing physical character of properties in both the broader and immediate contexts. Clearly, this building has nothing in common with the beautiful old-style bungalows that are the remnants left on that street. And as for the immediate context, consider the adverse effects on those residents, like Ken Jenkins and his family. They're going to be put through a nightmare as he sets out in his submission. And even if the applicant could meet the onus of the four tests, which it cannot, we request that this committee exercises discretion in favor of the neighborhood of Leeside. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question for this speaker? Okay, we'll come back and we'll ask the agent to answer all those questions, to entertain them. And in the meantime, we have Kevin and Livia Jenkins, are you there? Kevin Jenkins or Livia?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, hello?
Can you hear us okay?
Yes, could you please state your name and address for us? Yes, could you please state your name and address for us?
Yes, it's, it's Kevin Jenkins and Livia Wong, my wife. We're at seven ninety-nine Millwood Road, Toronto.
Thank you. So tell us what's your concern over this application?
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna read from a statement here. We strongly object to the proposed house and its requested ten variances for the following reasons. The east side setback bylaw requires one point two meters on each side of the lot line. So the legal intent is apparently to have two point four meters between the houses. However, if the variance of point nine meters is granted, there will be only one point three three meters between our houses, about halfway what they want. This is because our house built in nineteen thirty-two has a setback of only forty-three centimeters. Add that to the ninety the applicant hopes for, and you will get the one point three three meters I just mentioned. With a very high and long wall, only one point three three meters from our windows, this will totally block the views we now have obliquely to the north and south, eliminate direct sunlight altogether and compromise access to the west side of our house needed for cleaning the eaves troughs. It will also reduce the free flow of air around our gas-fired water heater exhaust, our dryer exhaust and our basement bathroom vent fan, all of which vent through our west wall. Note that our house has ten windows on the main floor. Half of these are on our west wall. They admit light to our living room, dining room and bathroom. The proposed house will block all five, made even worse if the height and setback variances are granted. And the three meter wide driveway between the houses is allowed to disappear. Our west windows would essentially be at the bottom of a well. The shadow diagrams just filed by the applicant last night clearly show that our west wall will be in darkness almost the entire day if this proposal is allowed. Now the chimney problem on our house. The Ontario Building Code requires that any flue within three meters of a structure must extend at least sixty centimeters above that structure. If a proposed house is built, its proximity and height would require us to extend our chimney to a minimum height of nine point five meters. That's about thirty-one feet, um, which may or may not be safe or even possible with a masonry chimney. And in any event, would cost us a lot of money for an issue we did not create. It would probably also compromise chimney draw. Um, now let's talk about the loss of privacy. The proposed house includes a second-story balcony at the southeast corner. Anyone sitting on the balcony will have a direct view down into our backyard below and also into our neighbor, neighbor's yard to the east. The requested reduced east setback would make this even more invasive. Uh, with respect to the style and character of the house, the style of the proposed building is not in character with the prevailing architectural style in the vicinity and therefore contravenes the general intent and purpose of the Toronto official plan. Now, Mr. Kerr has already quoted from that, so I won't repeat him. I'll just go on, uh, further down. Um, it's a two and a half story building where there are none in the vicinity. And still the applicant is asking for an additional forty centimeters beyond the bylaw. Uh, we've seen a picture of the proposed house that the, uh, applicant put on. You can judge for yourself that it's very different in style from the nearby houses. The proposed house is much wider than nearby houses. Reduced side yard setbacks totaling sixty centimeters are requested. And that is in addition to the entire width, three meters of the existing driveway between the houses, which will be entirely swallowed into the house. Um. Yeah, you can see, actually on the screen there, you can see our house is to the left, immediately to the left of the proposed house.
Just a bungalow.
We have the bungalow and they're proposing a much taller building beside it. Um, how much time do I have left? I don't see the clock anymore. Thank you. Oh, okay. My conclusion, the proposed house has been designed so that it won't fit on the lot unless ten major variances ranging from five to twenty-five percent are granted. This suggests disregard and disrespect for the bylaws right from the planning stage. Uh, approving it would set an undesirable precedent.
Sir, we're gonna ask you to summarize. Your time is, is coming to an end.
Okay, I'm at the conclusion here. Thank you, sir. Uh, approving it would set an undesirable, sorry?
I said.
Precedent, contribute to the, okay, contribute to the incremental creep beyond what is allowed and trivialize the force of bylaws in general. And finally, why should we be forced to spend thousands of dollars on the chimney, skylights, privacy screens, et cetera, as a result of someone else's action? I respectfully request the committee to reject the application entirely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question for this speaker? Okay, next, next speaker is Ray Campbell. Are you there? Uh, no? Okay, Ray Campbell, no. Andrea Van, Andrea Wan, are you there?
Uh, yes, I, I'm, uh, I'm Gordon Yan. I'm Andrea's, uh, husband.
Okay.
Andrea's here as well though.
Okay, can you please state your name and address and tell us which one wants to speak? If you wanna speak, it's.
Um, my name is Gordon Yan.
Okay.
And I live at seven nine five Millwood Road.
Thank you. And tell us what's your concern. We heard, we heard enough here. If you have something different, we'd appreciate it. So please go ahead and tell us what's your.
Uh, yeah, so, um, yeah, I, yeah, I would, uh, fully concur with, with my, my previous, uh, two neighbors' comments. Um, uh, we have as a direct neighbor to, to this proposed, um, uh, build, uh, we do have, um, two very, um, uh, significant concerns. Uh, one is with the, the west side. So this is, uh, item number six with the west side exterior main wall. Um, I understand that, uh, they reduced it to eight meters, but it's still a, a full meter above the seven that's permitted.
Okay.
Um, we have, um, uh, windows on, on our east and south sides. And those are basically our only windows that receive direct sunlight. And we have our home office there. We spend most of our daytime hours there. Um, you know, with COVID, uh, you know, and, and going forward, there's a lot of working from home. And the current, um, proposal is, uh, going to eliminate, um, a large percentage of the daylight that we receive. And that's, uh, that's, that's, um, very troubling to us, uh, from a mental health standpoint and, and, um, yeah. It, it's just, uh, a, a real deep concern of ours. Um, so that was the first item. The second item, uh, is the setback on the, uh, so this is item number nine. Um, so this was the setback proposed on the west side. Um, it proposed for point nine meters. Um, uh, one point two is allowed. It's about a twenty-five percent variance. Um, we can stand on our deck, um, on, which is in the, uh, basically the footprint of our house and almost touch the house that is there right now of seven nine seven. Uh, and, uh, so the proposal of moving it even closer is quite troubling when we have, um, like our neighbor, a very old, uh, house, uh, built on, um, an old foundation. And, uh, we are very concerned about the structural integrity of our foundation if this said house was to be built closer to ours.
Okay.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any question for this speaker? Yeah, we appreciate your, uh, being short because we hear, we hear the same thing. And, um, you know, repeating the same thing over and over again, it loses the value. So we heard it and let's move on. So thank you for being that short. Um, Anna Papa. Anna Papa?
Hi, hi, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, could you please state your name, your name and address please?
Um, Anna Papa, I'm at eight oh one Millwood Road. I'm also speaking for Andrea Papa. My mom, she is on a flight right now and couldn't be here. Um, yeah. And so, uh, I mean, of course, like everybody who spoke before, we are concerned about, uh, the size, just the overall size of the proposal because, um, I don't know if it's clear, but this neighborhood is all very narrow lots. Um, and everything is kind of proportional right now. There are a lot of good examples of, uh, bungalows that have been converted to two-story homes, but they're still proportional to their lots. And, um, I think this could be done a lot better than the current proposal. Um, I also, um, wanna speak about, um, the back deck because we are gonna lose all privacy. And, um, you know, we don't have, uh, a lot of the year that, that has good weather in Canada. And, uh, everybody here, like, we wanna enjoy the backyard. We don't want someone staring at us. It's, it's creepy. And no other, um, no other homes around here, uh, on this block have balconies. It's just, um, it's a lot because they're gonna have a view of, of just everybody. Um, and we are, uh, we're also very concerned about our neighbors just essentially losing daylight. Uh, we are, uh, we have north-facing homes. So the main windows, uh, like front windows to all the homes on this block don't get a ton of daylight as it is. So we depend on, uh, the east and west-facing windows for daylight. Um, and yeah, and a lot of us are working from home, at least part-time. And it really like, the quality of life would be massively reduced, um, for the, our neighbors adjoining this, uh, development. So we really, we're really concerned about that. And just, just in general, um, the, uh, more and more, um, buildings are being, uh, just sort of shoehorned in next to others. We really don't want this happening in this beautiful neighborhood. It's desirable and comfortable to live in because homes are proportional. There's a lot of, uh, thought and care given to landscaping, to the walkability and, um, uh, just being comfortable living here, that you're not shoehorned right next to someone who's gonna be staring at you like right into your, your living room window from like a foot away. Um, and I don't know if it's clear from the, the photos, but there's barely room for like one person to walk between on the, um, uh, east side of the property. Like maybe one person could walk, yeah, uh, through, uh, as it is, uh, if, if it gets reduced. Like nobody could even pass between those buildings on that side. So that's, that's really concerning. Like that's really too big for the lot. Um, and I know we've, we've beaten this horse to death. Um, so that's, uh, that's pretty much what, what I wanted to say. I don't need to take up all the time because it's been said before. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for being short and, uh, tell your mom you did a very good presentation. And we appreciate you being short and we understand the concerns. And, uh, see if the members have any question? No? Okay, so we'll move to the last one, Jeff Kettle. Jeff Kettle, are you there? Jeff Kettle. Yeah, he's supposed to be there. He's the, uh, yeah, Mr. Kettle. Yeah. Maybe the system, the system, yeah. Yeah. That's very clear. Is that us or him? That's him. Mr. Kettle, we hear the noises. Can you please go on? Absolutely. Mr. Kettle, could you please log out and log in again because we don't hear you? There is a problem in the system, uh, something wrong with the equipment. Could you please log out and log in again? Mr. Kettle, are you still allowed, uh, still there? Okay, so we'll wait for him to log in. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kettle, are you still there? Okay, M- Mr. Kettle, are you there?
Hello?
Yeah, okay, Mr. Kettle, something wrong with you?
Okay, I, I have no idea, I have no idea what the problem was, but anyway, I'll try and keep this brief. My name is, uh, Jeff Kettle. I'm, uh, co-president of the Leeside Resident Association. And, uh, as you can gather, we are strongly opposed to this application uh, because it fails to follow the official plan requirements pertaining to the, uh, character of residential neighborhoods. And because of the variances, the excessive variances, like a twenty-five percent, uh, um, density uh, over the, uh, over the permitted FSI, the, the height with a flat roof and, and it doesn't conform to the, to the height bylaws, uh, for a flat roof. Um, and it fails to, to satisfy the four tests for minor variances as required by the committee. The variance requested is not minor. Uh, it has too many unnecessary variances. A, um, none are required to accommodate a three-bedroom house on a standard-sized Leeside lot like this. There's no need for a side variance or a height variance. The, uh, secondly, the, the variance is desirable, it's not desirable for the appropriate development um, or use of the land. The massing is too big for the site. The, uh, street elevation appears to be three stories, um, comprising an integral garage and two floors above it. And yet, um, uh, the Leeside bylaw requires, uh, two stories. Uh, it's been, uh, described as two and a half stories. Thirdly, the, uh, the intent and purpose of the city's zoning codes and bylaws are not maintained. Um, it's, it's some of the, uh, variances are, are, as, as, as indicated, very high, like twenty-five percent for the, um, for the, um, FSI and for the, and the lot coverage. Very rare to get a lot coverage variance, um, in Leeside. And you can see from the plan, um, on the screen, um, just how much land is being covered by this proposal. You can, uh, can, can see how much, uh, the soft landscaping is, 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 um, is taken away. Um, and of course, it's all variances about maintaining the general intent and purpose of the official plan. No changes shall be made through rezoning minor variance of, that is not in keeping with the physical character of the neighborhood. The proposed dwelling with two floors above an integral garage is not the norm in this part of Leeside. It will look out of place and will destroy the uniformity of the first floor and the roofline heights along the street. The front yard landscaping of the proposed house is mostly hard surface. And this is contrary to the Leeside as a garden city, a hundred and ten years ago, um, incorporated with the concept of, of green lawns and tall tree trees, tall shade trees in the front yard, which are very typical of Leeside. In closing, the impact of the proposed three-level design and the variances to height and side yard is undesirable. Uh, and, and as you can see, a lot of neighbors have come out, um, and have written in opposition to this application. There's been no effort here to fit the Leeside character or the Leeside guidelines which are published. Thank you very much. I I by by the way, I also um ask you to to bear in mind that since the provincial government has changed the the rules around appeals for committee of adjustment applications, neighbors are really disenfranchised. If they can't make their point at the committee of adjustment, they are not able to appeal. And we've lost some of democracy here. So I would urge you to take that into consideration on every application that you review today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh just seconds. See if the members have any question, any question for this gentleman? No? Uh Mr. Kettle, you might want to do something about your equipment. It doesn't respond. So you may have some problem there. For next time, maybe you can fix it, okay? Just um uh we uh we don't hear you, then we close it and come back. So uh just for uh just for clarity, maybe you can fix it. And uh thank you for the uh brief presentation. And we'll go back to the agent and see what the uh see what the what the members are saying. Okay, so, Mr. uh
Hamid is the easy way, I think.
Okay, so, Mr. Hamid, yeah, could you please come back? And and rather, as you can see, you heard the concerns of many residents. And could you tell us?
Correct.
Could you tell us what you uh what you what you what you what you want to do about this?
Sure, I I'm gonna be fast uh to to be able to fit it within five minutes. I'll start with the first one, Mr. Care. Um so technically, the only thing I understood from that one, his concern was that we are not within the bylaw, which I understand that's the only reason we are in the committee of adjustment. We worked very hard with planners to make sure we feed as much as possible within the context of this neighborhood. We considered everything. The main reason for our flat roof is the green garden. It's not uh to be used as a party, especially for example. Uh uh so I I just wanted to say I understand your concerns, but we went back and forth with planners who are in the body of government to ensure that the neighborhood get a desirable design. And at the end, as you can see in the staff report, we could satisfy them and we could get to the middle ground that both uh owner get a space to live in a nice space and at the same time neighborhood get what they need. In terms of neighbor on the east side, uh I again, I understand what they're saying. The only problem here is I think there is a misunderstanding here. No matter what, any building within one point two meter of the lot size is gonna get built into a story which is within the bylaw because of the height and the fact that that building is old, as he mentioned. All the window on the west side are gonna get blocked because they are too close to the uh uh property line. This is, it doesn't matter if it's gonna be uh two-story or even one-story. If it's a one-story, the west side of that that uh window is gonna get blocked. And uh we we can't really say keep a driveway there because it just technically we have by by law, we have to have a parking, a garage for that. And we have been trying to keep the land as a soft landscape to the at least to what bylaw asks us, which is a minimum of fifty percent, which we are way above that. And getting to uh Andrea One, the neighbor on the west side, I think they misunderstand apart. We are not getting closer to them. We are getting further away. Right now, we are zero fi- uh zero point forty-five centimeter, uh sorry, forty-five centimeter from their main wall, from the property line. We are pushing back. We would be at the same place if we're going for the major uh renovation. And one of the reasons we did not do that is because we wanted to give more space. Again, yes, Anna Papa is right. If you look at the neighborhood now, you cannot walk through these buildings. We are giving more setbacks there. It's not one point two meter. But the reason planners were okay with that is because that's just by definition, we are falling within that one point two meter. By by law, any uh it's exactly what it says by by law. The uh lots with a frontage of uh greater than six meter, less than twelve meter, they can have zero point nine meter. The problem is that in terms of definition, we are less than twelve meter. But at the same time, it says that if a detached house required fifteen-meter frontage, then that applies to that. And the reason staff were not picking on that is exactly that because it makes sense. We would not, we are not getting closer. We are getting further away. So technically, comparing to what, as you said, uh they are facing the wall right now, we are going half a meter away. So you see that wall further away. We are not getting closer to the building. We are not destroying or undermining any foundation there. Uh in terms of what Mr. Kettle said, uh I I again, there are so many misunderstandings here. We are not adding twenty-five percent above GFA. And we are not covering too much of soft landscape. We don't even have soft landscape variance because we have more than enough soft landscape there. And we even have green rooftop. Uh we are thinking about environment. We are very conscious about that. We consciously make uh designs that respect neighborhood environment and at the same time try to satisfy the owner and needs of the owners to make sure, as one of the neighbors says, since they live in that and work at the house, at least they get enough light. Of course, the designs which was from hundred years ago, they they did not have enough consideration to bring enough enough light into the building. We are trying to do that. So in hundred years' time, if someone else wanted to build something next to us, we don't go and complain, say they're gonna block our light. In terms of the chimney, I have never seen city uh imposing anyone.
Okay, sir, you're getting you're getting clear to uh to your five minutes. Could you please summarize and then we'll see if the members have any question?
Absolutely. I will just do one last point is in regard to our east neighbor. And it's valid, so I just wanna make a point there. Regarding the balcony, there is one variance. The setback of the balcony should be from one point two meter. For now, it's uh uh it is zero point nine. We are uh changing that, so that variance gonna get waived. Uh we are making that balcony one point two meter and we make sure we have uh a privacy screen on that balcony, so it does not invade their privacy at all.
Okay, are you are you changing anything to the variance?
Uh yes, I think there is one variance regarding the setback of the
Could you please tell me what's variance and you're changing it to what?
Uh give me one second. So it's uh it's number oh, it's the number two that I already said that you're changing it, I think. Oh, no, 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 that's not the number two. My bad. It's number uh not encroaching platform, number one.
Number one, you're changing it to what?
Uh we are just taking the variance out. We are gonna uh or follow the bylaw. It's gonna be one point two meter, so it's a meter.
Uh sir, I'm sorry, I it's not clear to me. You're changing number one that you're asking point nine. What you're changing it to?
One point two meters.
One point two meters, thank you. So in that case, it is removed. Yeah? So number one is removed?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So the only change you made, you're removing number one and you're changing number six to eight point zero zero.
And we're removing number two as well.
Number twelve, what?
Two, number two is removed as well.
Oh, number two, yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. All right, number one and number two. Thank you. Okay, members, um the gentleman is making just before that, just to make sure number one and number two are removed. Number six is changed to eight point zero zero. And now tell me if you have any questions. Miss Sanka, Miss Atarodi had a question.
Correct. Um to you, Mr. Chair. One of the city's staff recommendation is that we tie to um east and west elevation drawings um attached to this report, which which means the revised one. Um the applicant modify variance number six, which was west side yard side exterior main wall facing sideline to eight meter. But when you refer, I'm talking regarding variance number five, which is height of east side exterior main wall. Uh when you refer to the drawing attached, which was uh which number east is drawing number A dash one twenty-one. On the drawing, this height have been modified to eight meter as well. I want the applicant to clarify that. I mean, if if the drawing is, if I'm reading the drawing correctly, or if the num- this number also should change?
Could uh you're you're uh you are reading that correctly, this number should change if it's referring to the east side.
So then, could you please give us the correct number for variance number five? Height of east side exterior main wall height, which is now eight point three seven. What will be yours?
Eight point zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's two one eight zero zero. Good question. Okay. Now, based on this change, is the uh the staff condition maybe is no longer valid?
It is exactly the same as their condition. We are following that uh technically what they ask us to do and what they were comfortable.
Okay, any other question? If no other question, can I have a motion then? Miss Sank- Miss Atarodi?
Yes, to you, Mr. Chair. I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application with the following changes. Um variance number one eliminated, variance number two eliminated, variance number five is uh the height of the east side exterior main wall facing a side side lot line is now eight meters. Variance number six, the proposed height of west side exterior main wall facing a side lot line is now eight. And that is my motion. Oh, no, and also would like to add the staff recommendation that the proposal be developed in accordance with the east and west side elevation drawing submitted to committee of adjustment attachment number one and two. That's my motion.
And the second, do you have a second? Mr. Kit's seconding. All in favor? Okay, opposed. Miss Sanka is opposing and the other three are for it. So sir, your application is approved, subject to those changes that was just mentioned. Okay?
Thank you so. Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
All right, now we go back to thirty-four, yeah? Thirty-four, I think was uh they didn't respond before. Right? Yeah, thirty-four, that was Fidenzio Salvatore. He's not there, huh? Fidenzio Salvatore, uh Yeah. Okay, so thirty-four is no, thirty-five, we finished it. Number thirty-six. Thirty-six is uh two, uh three hundred and forty-two, Briar Hill Avenue. Apply application number thirty-six. And here we have Drew Lazlo. Are you there?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening. So please say your name and your address, please.
Uh I'm Drew Lazlo, agent for the owner. My address is one ninety-three Row Avenue, Toronto.
Okay, so we have here um a new uh a new dwelling, six variances, forestry condition number one and four letters of support. Um FSI thirty-four sixty-five length. Okay, so we have a couple. Could you please give a very short presentation regarding some of the variances here that uh that are questionable? Uh so give us a short presentation, please.
Of course. Um one thing I I would just like to uh correct you, there are actually, there should be six letters of support on file. And six total and two of those are from the adjacent neighbors.
Okay, sir.
Directly adjacent.
Just to let you know, we don't we don't decide by referendum how many. I just mentioned we have letters of support. So whether there's six or twenty, we we'd make the decision based on the planning act, four tests of planning act, not by the number. But this, okay, I I put here six letters of support. Please go ahead.
Right. Uh I appreciate that. I fully understand. I just, I think I just wanted to make it apparent that two of the, that the missing letters were from the directly adjacent neighbors.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we have, thank you. We have six variances um in total. Just briefly, uh if I could to talk about variances, numbers one and six pretty similar. They just have to do with the overall length and depth of the proposed dwelling. Uh we're proposing twenty point six five meters. That includes the rear deck of of um attached to the house. That is because we're excavating that deck, so it's included in the length and depth. Otherwise, we would fully conform. So in other words, the above-grade portions of the house fully conform, like the the distance from the main front wall to the main rear wall fully conform to the bylaw. Uh variance is variance number two has to do with the FSI permitted the point three five. Uh we're asking for point six five, which is relatively normal for this area. I have many examples and and it kind of ranges anywhere from fifty all the way up to eighty-six percent. Um and just for the committee committee's information, number four, three forty-eight Briar Hill, which is just a couple doors away, um was approved for the same variance, point six five, a couple of years ago. And variance number three has to do with the east side yard setback variance. So we're we're supposed to be three feet away. We're proposing to be two feet away. And that's only for a portion of the east side of the house. The majority of that east side wall does conform to the bylaw. And the west side, just for the committee's information, yeah, we're allowed to be as close as as three feet from the property line. But we have positioned the west side at four feet. So we're actually a bit further away, excuse me, than what the bylaw permits. Variance number four has to do for a bit of driveway width, where we're a bit over by less than a meter. We just want to extend it all the way. We want to extend the proposed driveway all the way to the east side property line as it currently exists. Variance number five has to do with the eaves projection. We're just encroaching or not encroaching, we're getting a bit too close. We're supposed to be one foot away. You know, our eaves drop is supposed to be one foot away. We're proposing it being six inches away from the east side property line. And variance number six I already mentioned, which is has to do with the building depth. And the only reason we need that variance is because we're excavating underneath the rear deck. Thank you very much. If the committee has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, of course.
Thank you, members. We don't have anybody else registered. And there is no condition from any department except the forestry? Any question for this gentleman? And if Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lazio, my question is about variance number one, two and three. Yeah, the building length, uh that is number one. It is eighteen percent more than the maximum you are allowed. And variance number two, FSI forty-six percent more than you are allowed. And variance number three, less than the minimum requirement. How do you justify these are minor? These are not minor.
Um okay, well, if I could sort of go backwards, variance number three, that has to do with the side yard setback. So again, we're permitted to be at three feet. We're proposing two feet, but if um two-foot side yard setback variance we're asking for is for the minority of that side. It's less than half of the side. And we make up for it by pushing the west side of the house one foot further away from the property line. So I believe it's it's totally sort of minor when sort of, you know, mixed in So I believe it's, it's totally sort of minor, when when sort of, you know, mixed in with with the the massing of the house. Um, variance number two having to do with the FSI again, uh, that I have many examples of this being approved. Uh, FSI point six five or higher being approved for the area. But I think one other thing that's even more important than just sort of bringing up precedence is that if if you, if you, like on the site plan, we generally conform to the length, okay, except that again, we need these two technical variances for lengthened up just because we're excavating below the rear deck. But for all intents and purposes, the width of the house is what is permitted by the bylaw, the length is what's permitted. And the resulting gross floor area is, or FSI is point six five. Um, and variance number one again has to do with this, this uh, the the length of the property, again, totally technical in my opinion. We conform to the main, main, distance from the main front wall to the main rear wall, conform to the bylaw. It's only because we are excavating under the rear deck that we need this variance, otherwise we would conform. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, number, number three and number five variances are too close to the east house. And they are interfering with the water, uh, water flow and lot line separation. So they are, it's a minor.
If I may comment, if you, and again, this is clearly shown on the site plan, if staff is willing to put it up, but otherwise, the exist, the house that that is there today is pretty well right on the property line, on the east property line, we are actually way, if I could say, way better in the situation. So you can see, if you look at the east property line, that's the one on the right side of the house, you can see a dashed line. Unfortunately, I can't point it out, but you can see the line of the existing dwelling. It's dashed and it says line of existing dwelling to be demolished. And it is pretty well right on the property line. And we, so we are improving the situ- situation dramatically by moving the house well over to the west.
Okay, thank you, I think, yeah, I think we, there's no need, you know, arguing back and forth. Uh, this is what you're asking for, and let's see what the other members are saying. So any other question? If there is no question, then I need a motion. Miss Taroody?
Yes, to you, Mr. Chair, um, um, I was listening to the applicant and I'm convinced that uh, that this application is minor, therefore I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application um, subjected to urban forestry.
Thank you, and second? Mister Kit is seconding, all in favor? Opposed? Miss Khan is opposing, your application is approved, subject to forestry, and that's it, there is no other condition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, any luck with the number thirty-four, uh, yeah, he's back, okay. All right, so that's um, if more, let me see.
Hello?
That's um.
Hello?
Yeah, hello, uh, that's Mister uh,
Oh.
Fidenzio Salvatore.
Fidenzio.
Okay, can you please state?
Yeah, thank God, I'm now on the cell, I'm now on the cell.
Okay, can you please just?
Okay.
Your name and your address, please.
Yeah, it's Fidenzio Salvatore, seventy-three Greenbrook Drive, landscape architect, and I'm the agent for this submission.
Okay, thank you, just, just a second, please. All we have here is a, is is a uncovered porch, one variance, there is nothing else here. Members, do we need a presentation here?
Yeah.
No, okay, so, sir, we don't need the presentation, we're gonna move to the committee, do you have any, anything to add?
Uh, not at all, I I do have a few pointers, but I think uh, in the essence of time, um, and it looks like there'll be no opposition, I will uh, not make a presentation.
Well, uh, yeah, okay, well, I don't promise anything, but let's say if you have nothing to add, we're gonna move to committee. The committee members, do you have any question? If not, can I have a motion then, please? Mister Khan?
Thank you, Mister Chair, it's minor and I move this application be approved.
Thank you, second? Miss Sankar's seconding, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, sir, your application is approved, there's no condition.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, and you take good care, all of you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening, have a good evening, bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, number thirty-seven, I believe, huh? Application number thirty-seven, which is twenty-five Haddington Avenue, application number thirty-seven. And this is thirty-seven. We have uh, Jonathan Benskovsky, are you there?
Good evening, Mister Chair, good evening, committee.
Could you please, yeah, could you please, we know who you are, but repeat your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Jonathan Benskovsky, three zero one Kiwaton Avenue.
Okay, we have here um, uh, it's a new dwelling, this was deferred in in August to revise drawings, we still have now thirteen variances. And forestry, three letters of objection, six letters of support. Okay, can you please, because we have what, one, two, three, three more speakers? And we'd like you to make a presentation, please take your five minutes, then we can move to the other people.
Yes, so the application was originally deferred um, due to the relocation of the driveway onto the flanking street. Uh, we did do a sightline analysis through a traffic engineer that was submitted to the city and transportation uh, has no issue now with the variance relating to the flanking street, which is variance number eight. I would also note that the two variances of twelve and thirteen would no longer be applicable due to the new O L T decision nullifying the old North York zoning bylaw. Out of an abundant, out of, out of, out of an abundance of caution, I would like to keep them there, but they are no longer applicable as per the new O L T order. Uh, if we could bring up the site plan, please? Uh, I'd like to start dealing with the coverage, uh, as we, as we, um, part of the study of the flanking street, we notice here on the top left corner, which would be the northwest corner of the site of the property, we do have a corner rounding. That corner rounding leads to a couple of variances that are before you today in terms of the magnitude of them. One would be the coverage variance itself, as that is now a corner rounding, that is actually not included in the site stats itself, but that essentially more or less would be considered a portion of the property on a lot that is not in a flanking yard. That also then relates to the landscaping variances of six and seven, as again, that is, will be and maintained as green space. This is a flanking street and along Haddington, as we can see along Esquire, there is a considerably large boulevard. I note there are no sidewalks on both Esquire or Haddington, with that exclusively landscaped as soft area. There is no proposal for a drive, for a walk aisle from Haddington that would decrease any soft landscaping. As we see, the new driveway has been curved to maintain a large city-owned tree uh, along Esquire Avenue. Turning to the setbacks itself, the existing dwelling itself now is point nine meters from the south, we are requesting a reduction of point three meters. I would also note that thirty-three Esquire has an existing side yard setback of six four, of point six four meters. So this is not an introduction uh, of a feature that does not exist in the neighborhood today. If we could turn to the side elevation, please, the north side first. There are also two variances requested for the main wall height projections. Uh, I would note, uh, if we could please continuing, right there, please, here we see, sorry, one more down. Here we see the north elevation, this is what faces Haddington. The only portion that is subject to the increase in height we see is the architectural feature above the entrance, as well as a small feature at the rear. I would also note that the height is compliant with the zoning bylaw. If we could please continue on to the next slide, please? Oh, sorry, going the other way, sorry, going up into the south elevation. There's a modic- modest request for an increase of the main wall height as it faces the south, that one's perfect. We are requesting seven point nine eight meters, whereas seven point five meters is the requirement. In my opinion, about twenty inches is modest and wouldn't be felt uh, or have a negative impact on the adjacent neighbors. Lastly, uh, in terms of the setback for the bay windows on the north, if we could go back to the site plan, the existing dwelling that's on the property today, uh, if we just zoom in, yes, perfect, if we could just zoom in there, correct, we would see the outline uh, of the the dotted line of the existing dwelling. The existing dwelling is essentially located in the identical spot that the bay window projections are proposed along Haddington Avenue. That is essentially the setback that exists along Haddington. Uh, in my opinion, with this flanking yard being extensively landscaped with a large boulevard and no sidewalks, these impacts are mitigated by the distance from the side main wall heights of the north, as well as the views from Esquire Avenue. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, we'll be back to you after we hear the other people. So we have the other speaker, we have Susan Bondi, are you there? Susan Bondi. Okay, Heather Crawford, are you there?
Yes, Mister, Mister Chair, Heather Crawford, four oh eight Elmer Road.
Thank you, and tell us what's your concern, please.
I'm, I'm representing SARAH, South Armour Heights Residents Association. Um, just in a letter, uh, set out all, all of, all of the problems that we see with this development. Um, quickly, for example, variances three and four have excessive encroachment on the south uh, side lot line. The rear deck is thirty-seven percent higher than permitted. Variances eleven, twelve, and thirteen have, are excessive and exceed what has been previously approved in the area. Variances six and seven, re- there are uh, numerical uh, inaccuracies uh, regarding the landscaping. And I just want to point out that um, there are support letters, uh, five or six, I believe, that you had mentioned earlier, that had been submitted to support this project, and they were received past the deadline, so they would need to be disqualified, thank you.
Thank you, any question for this speaker? Okay, now, what happened to the other ones, uh, Susan Bondi and Kim Klar, are they there? Uh, they're not there, huh? Okay, so that's all we have? That's it, okay, thank you. All right, Mister Benskovsky, can you please come back and 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 address the concern of uh, of Heather Crawford?
Uh, yes, Mister Chair, uh, I I'm comfortable moving forward with the numbers that are identified on the public notice. Um, if there are any discrepancies, uh, again, if this were to be meritorious, I I would be happy with whatever numbers are identified within the public notice itself. I'd like to just clarify one quick thing about variance number eleven that deals with the rear platform. The, the request is not for the height of the rear platform, the request is for the projection past and beyond the rear main wall due to the height. So the height is permitted as per the zoning bylaw, the request itself is only for the projection. The permitted projection that's permitted is two point five meters, we are requesting two point six nine meters. It, it is not the height of that rear deck, it is actually the projection beyond that rear main wall of the deck itself. Uh, in terms of variances two and three, again, in my opinion, a a request of an increase in length of point four two meters, uh, again, on a flanking street with a reduction of point three meters, while not having an overall height variance uh, adjacent to that south neighbor, while only requesting an increase of the main wall height of point nine, uh, sorry, a point four eight meters, in my opinion mitigates any impact that might be felt in that rear yard of the adjacent neighbor. And and I'd be happy to answer any questions the committee might have.
Thank you. Uh, members, any question? Mister Khan?
Thank you, Mister Chair, uh, my only concern is Mister Benskovsky's variance number six. Is the front yard soft landing area, no, no, uh, sorry, number six, yeah. Front yard landscape area thirty-seven percent for fifty percent, which is thirty-five percent less than the zoning requires. Please justify.
Yeah, if we could bring back the site plan, please, again, I I think when we look at the context again of this being a flanking corner property, we actually lose the benefit of that corner rounding, kind of that triangle portion at the corner of Haddington and Esquire. So in essence, although again, it can't be um, included in the calculation, that is essentially land that I don't want to say floating out there because it is, it is municipal land. But again, there are very generous boulevards, both along Haddington as well as Esquire that would mitigate that. And if we were to take that portion there, which I believe is about four, a little bit under four square meters, we would most likely comply with that requirement. So again, because of that corner rounding, it it kind of, again, I I don't want to mislead you by saying it changes the numbers, but it skews the perception of the numbers, because on a, on a regular lot, we would not lose that corner rounding. It it would be a rectangular lot that we would be permitted to include that area in all of our calculations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, any question, any more questions? So if not, can I have a motion then, please? Mister Khan?
Thank you, Mister Chair, uh, after listening to the Mister Benskovsky and other, other members, I am of the opinion, although there is no staff recommendation for this, so I think it's minor and complies with the uh, zoning bylaws and for test, so I move this application be approved with forestry conditions.
Okay, yeah, that's it, second, do you have a second?
Uh, excuse me, Mister Khan, uh, 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 there's a, a transportation condition that did you want to include that as well?
Transportation is okay. Transportation in their letter of November sixteen twenty-two, they are saying it's okay.
When you say it's okay, when you say it's okay, are you adding transportation or not?
Yes, sir, I'm having transportation, uh, no, not transportation conditions now.
No, yeah. Okay, so there's only forestry. Okay, any, any other, uh, so the motion here is to approve subject to forestry, any, uh, do I have a second for that? Miss Sankar's seconding, all in favor? Opposed? Two opposing and two, okay. Okay, I looked at this uh, uh, application, I understand the um, I understand that there are, there's some objections here, but there are also some support. And the question here is the thirteen variances, I thought there was too much, but looking in each one of them, I believe that it's uh, it's uh, it 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 flies and the um, except for forestry. As the motion said, there is not too many uh, departments opposing, so therefore, I'll, I'll, I'll join the motion and to approve the application subject to forestry. So sir, your application is approved, subject to forestry, it set conditions number one there.
Thank you, committee.
Okay. Number thirty-eight, which is three fifty-eight Glengarry Avenue. Application number thirty-eight, and here we have Nafise Zangzabi, Zangia Badi, Nafise Zangia Badi, are you there?
Yes, good afternoon, Mister Chair.
Okay, please, please repeat your name and address for the record here, so it can be recorded on the system.
My name is Nafise Zangia Badi, representing the owners, address is thirty, I will work out path, Thornhill.
Thank you, so we have here a new dwelling, this was deferred in May, and in order to revise the application, now we have three variances. The lot coverage still, still saying thirty instead of thirty-five percent. Instead of thirty, we have many documentation for two thousand twenty-two. And here correspondence from Glengarry, allowing number thirty to remove three, okay, that's a different story. Okay, so here Okay, so here, uh staff, do we have the barrel Sherman or it's gone? It's gone, so we don't have anybody else. Okay, we have nobody here uh except you, but we need a small presentation so we can move on. Could you please give us a small presentation as to the merit of the application? Okay, please go ahead.
Yes, the application is to construct a new two-story dwelling. Um we're asking for only three variances, two of them relates to the height, one for the coverage. Um I should mention that the house is for an elderly couple who have been living in the neighborhood and forty years, and they have decided to tear this down down and build a new house and live there for the rest of their lives. They needed an elevator in the house, and that's why this place for the elevator to accommodate the space for the elevator, we had to increase the footprint a little bit to thirty-five percent. And that is in keeping with the neighborhood, it's been approved um in the neighborhood before so many precedents. And even though we are over the permitted coverage, there's no length, depth, side yard setback, rear yard and front yard setback. So even though coverage is a little bit more than permitted, we try to uh keep the rest of the variances within, the rest of the design within the permitted bylaws. Um and there is also the height variance. The reason for the height is because of the projection in the front and the rear that creates that main wall height variance, whereas the entire side wall, it's seven point eight meters on both sides. There is no windows, no gables whatsoever on the sides. And that number eight point seven is just because of the bay window projection at the front and in the rear. And the last one, which is the height under the old bylaw, is just due to the change of grade and the way the height is measured under the old bylaw from the center of the road. Uh so this application, in my belief, is very minor, and as I said, it's for an elderly couple with and ask the panel to fill the application and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions, members? Miss Satarodi.
To you, Ma- Ma- Mr. Chair, I just want to get clarification regarding variance number one. So the the reason you have thirty five point seven percent is because you want to um you want to design a house that is accessible or can you just add one more?
Yes, because as I said, they're elderly couple and it's going to be hard for them to climb up and down the stairs. So they needed the elevator and the space be accommodated for the elevator, just increase the footprint of the house a little bit.
Any, any other question? Any question? If not, can I have a motion then, please? Miss Sankar?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I think I accept the explanations provided by um uh the agent here today about the unique circumstances of these provisions. And I'll put forward a motion to approve this application and I'll make it subject to forestry.
Thank you. Uh second, Mr. Khan seconding or in favor? Opposed? Miss Satarodi is opposing. Okay, your application is approved, subject to forestry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Application number thirty-nine, which is three hundred and five Greenfield Avenue. Application number thirty-nine. And here we have Miles Weeks. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Could you please state your name and address for the records here?
My name is Miles Weeks. I'm a planner on behalf of the applicant and my address is one seventy-four Spadina Avenue.
Okay, so we have here um we have here two variances. Except I have like one, two, three, four, four people to speak for against this application. So please give us your five-minute presentation, then we'll see what they have to say.
I believe. Um if if staff could kindly pull up uh the 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 plan for the application, I think that would be helpful. And just the next page. Yes, this will do. Thank you. Um so uh this application, as I'm sure you're aware, uh we were here before the committee, I believe it was back in late October or November, I can't quite recall. And at that time, we deferred the application uh on the basis of comments from the Transportation Department regarding a third variance. Um we wanted to resolve those comments as we felt the variance was no longer needed and we wanted to remove that confusion. So we've resolved that particular variance and as you'll see on the updated zoning notice, there are now only two variances. So those variances are with regards to the the dark box on the site plan. It's a fifty-nine, a roughly fifty-nine square meter addition to an existing building. Um and that addition is intended to accommodate a reception area, an elevator and a stairway, um all of which are intended to improve the access and function of the existing building, which is much older and doesn't necessarily meet accessibility standards today. Um so the two variances that that are related to this addition, the first is building height. Uh the bylaw permits two stories. We're requesting a variance to permit three stories. This is largely a technicality. Uh the building appears as two stories, but it has to do with the height of the basement relative to grade. Uh so technically, by zoning standards, it is three stories. Um but the addition will match the height of the existing building. So we're not adding any new height. We're just matching the existing profile of the building that's already on the property. The second variance, I'm just pulling up the wording here. Uh the second variance has to do with the location of a community center. And I apologize, I should have mentioned that. That is what the use of this building will be for. It's a community center for for children with autism and special needs. Um community centers have a number of criteria under the zoning bylaw as as it pertains to location. And and we we don't meet some of those criteria. Um one of the criteria is that it has to be with, it has to be a lot of fifteen hundred square meters or less. This lot is is a fairly large existing lot owned by the city of Toronto. And it's twenty-seven uh twenty-seven hundred square meters, so not quite double the the maximum size. And it also has to be within eighty meters of a a major street as identified in the city's policy plans. Um we're roughly a hundred and thirty-six meters away from the nearest major street, so effectively two blocks away instead of one block away. Um and and that's really the summary of our variances. We're really not looking to change the overall function of the site. Uh it will largely operate in the same manner. The parking lot that you see on the plan is already there today. It's just being redesigned uh in a fairly minor way to accommodate this fifty-nine square meter addition, which again is to improve the the accessibility and function of the site uh for the safety of the children that will be using it in the future. So I'll uh I'll stop there and save a little time and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Let's see what the other neighbors are saying. We have here Catherine Chow, are you there? Catherine Chow.
The chair.
Yeah, could you please state your name and address?
Catherine Chow, three hundred Maplehurst Avenue.
And tell us what's your concern about this application, please?
Um so I look, I just noticed there's something new in the plan, so uh there are two parking spots added, right, uh at the back of the building. Yeah, in the previous plan, um it doesn't show the new parking spots.
Uh, okay, so you're just questioning the the mark in the in the in the in the plan. Anything else?
Yeah, yeah, so so, yeah, please.
Anything else about these two variances? No?
Uh sure. Okay, the for the lot size is is uh eighty-five percent more than allowed for the bylaw. So it's not a minor variance, it's eighty-five more. So I think it's it's a big change and um for bylaw is supposed to protect the whole neighborhood, but now with such a big change, will will the uh substance of the bylaw still uphold? And also with such a big structure, it contradicts the conformity of the whole neighborhood, which is single-family home.
Okay. That's it? Thank you.
And with the uh property not being managed by the city, uh what will be the result later on?
Okay, when you finish, let me know because you stop uh you you.
Uh, yes, yes, uh.
Let me know when you stop.
Uh I'm okay now, yeah.
Thank you. Any question for this speaker? No? Yeah, Mr. Khan, you have a question?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Chow.
Yes.
Do you cons- uh what you said is right, I heard it. But do you consider the cause for which it will be it will be built?
The cost wa- for what?
Not the cost, cause, the reason for it will be built. That is, uh children who are handicapped, who have autism, so it is that reason they are building.
Uh huh, uh huh. But um I just wonder why they allow such a big variance of eighty-five percent more.
Okay, all right, any other question? All right, so the next one we have, James Tam, are you there? Peter Wu, Peter Wu, are you there? Peter Wu? Yeah, if you're there, can you please speak up?
This is Peter Wu from three oh six Maplehurst.
Thank you. Okay, and tell us, please, what's your concern about this application?
My main concern is the visual impact to my uh property. Uh because the extension is um directly blocking my my view from the um from the north side of my of my property.
Okay.
And uh, okay, um also, the uh the other concern is the noise level because um there's going to be a a playground right behind my my fence. Um so uh I'm concerned that it will cause some issues to to my
Okay.
Living. Um also, the the parking lot, the parking lot somehow it's like on a higher grade, so cars coming in and out will shine and headlight into my I friendly room um with ad um traffic and it's going to get worse. So that's my.
Okay, any they finish, yeah? Okay, uh any question for this gentleman? No? Okay, so our last speaker here is, oh, huh, sorry? I'm sorry, I don't get you. We have Peter Wu.
Mr. Chair, there's also a Francis Yang that has called in.
Oh, okay.
Hello.
Yeah?
This is Francis Yang.
Okay, can you?
Uh three oh six Greenfield Avenue.
Yeah, okay, uh do you want to add something? Peter Wu just spoke, so what do you want to, what do you want to add? Please speak up, uh we have your uh we have your name. So please tell us what you want to say.
I I'm I'm Francis Yang, not Peter Wu.
I know, so he wants Francis Yuans. What?
Oh, oh.
Okay, so please tell us.
Okay.
Just to make it
Yeah.
Could you please?
My
Could you please?
Yes, very uh very thoughtful.
Could you please?
My my concern is with the
Mr. Francis?
My concern is with the extension. Um because it's it's going to uh take up part of the parking lot and reduce the number of parking space on the lot. So the clients will be parking on the street on uh Greenfield, which is the uh the entrance to their lot, right, uh Greenfield Avenue. And the street is too narrow for through traffic and parked cars there uh at the same time. So so accident will be highly likely. This is the reason why parking is not permitted on on Greenfield Avenue on our street. And um like we have, we have, we had same problem with the People's Church on Wilford Avenue before. But it was only on weekends when they have Sunday mass, so we have cars parked on our street. Now it will be a everyday problem and it's very dangerous, especially when there's children involved. And that's my concern. Thank you.
Okay, before you go, uh your name is Francis Wang. Could you please repeat your na- your address? Your address for the record here?
Yes, uh, yeah. Yeah, I I I'm sorry, I I did, but probably you didn't hear. My name is Francis, Francis Yang, Y A N G.
Yeah.
Address is three oh six Greenfield Avenue.
Perfect, thank you. Any question for this gentleman?
Yeah.
No? Okay, so uh the last one is Obi, Odeyabala, are you, is he there?
Good evening.
Oh, hi, Odeyabala. Could you please state your name and address for us?
My name is Obi Udebala. I am, I live at three one five Greenfield Avenue. I am here to represent my parents who own the building, John and Cecilia Udebala.
Thank you. And tell us what's your, what's your concern?
Okay, my concern is actually with the application in in its entirety because I am looking at the letter of support from Councilman John Fillion. For starters, he he actually states um the location wrong in his in his letter. He says the building is owned by the city and is on Maplehurst Avenue. That is factually wrong. The building is on Greenfield Avenue. It's not on Maplehurst Avenue. So if a councilman is lending his support to a project, if he fundamentally gets the location of the project wrong, then how can we trust every other thing that has to do with that project? Now, I want to I want to state a point with regards to a question that Councilman Khan asked before, which is the cause um for autistic children. Now, I am not one of those people who is not in my backyard. I don't want to, I don't want this to be construed as that. I don't want it to be that I'm trying to deprive people of their opportunity to have a place um to get whatever needs, social needs that they can. But in the letter that Council Fillion, Councilman Fillion said, they are actually already operating on the Dempster Building on Beecroft, and the reason they want to move is to return that property to historical community use. I would ask, isn't a school that helps autistic children community use? Wouldn't that be defined as community use? First. Secondly, this entire place is a completely residential area. There is nothing here that looks like this. This building, this property, as far as I know, has been here for forty-plus years. It used to be an old Toronto Police um Training Academy and the the city has left the property empty. Now, that's property on three oh five used to actually serve a social purpose. It used to be, it was used before to help um um women. It was a shelter for women, meaning it was, it was, um it was never really that busy. There was not really that many staff members there. There was probably maybe about four parking, four cars parked there on average every day. It was very quiet. So it was, it was a very acceptable use for the building. With what they're proposing now, we don't know how many people are going to be using this school, how many staff members we have, how many cars are going to be here, how is that going to impact the traffic on the residential street itself? None of that has been explained to us. Secondly, when you actually look at the size of what they're actually proposing here, just to put it into perspective, the application is for three oh five Greenfield Avenue. In actuality, this is going to cover three oh five Greenfield Avenue, three oh seven Greenfield Avenue, three oh nine Greenfield Avenue and three eleven Greenfield Avenue. They're actually proposing to build a shed as well. There is a proposal to, well, in the drawings itself, there is a in the drawings itself, there is, there is something there related to building a shed. That shed would be built from what I'm looking at on three oh nine Greenfield Avenue. I, I suppose, um, the way I'm looking at it is kind of maybe off because this property has been owned by the city, so the way it's, the way the numbers work. But in terms of looking at it as per how I consider residential, the residential nature of this street, this project will cover between three oh five and three eleven Greenfield Avenue. Now, it is very easy for people to present their proposals on paper and for the committee to assess this on paper. But in actuality, when you're there in person and you see the implications of what they're asking, you realize that it doesn't really match up with what they say on paper. What they say on paper is one thing and what actually they intend to do at the end of it is another thing. There is a, there is a large variance with this. And also, I've actually had a personal problem with this property because the city has not been maintaining this property and two years ago it damaged my fence and we had to pay over two thousand five hundred dollars to fix our fence. When we tried to claim this back through the city insurance, they claimed that the city did not own this property, but clearly from this, from this meeting already, we can tell that the city owns this property. And I've actually gone back and messaged the insurance guy to be like, hey, I wanna, I wanna open that claim because now I have verifiable proof to say that this is actually city-owned property. So in general, I think the entire application needs to be reviewed. And also, I want to mention something to City Council Planning Staff. This letter, I got this letter, I believe, a day before I was supposed to send in a written proposal, okay? I've been sitting here since two o'clock. I work at eleven P M tonight. I work nights. I don't have a cushy job. I don't work from home. I've been here for four and a half hours. This is not nice. It's not nice for a citizen. And also, it would be nice for planning, for city staff to actually put some of these things in layman terms. Not everybody is an architect. Not everyone is a structural engineer. Not everyone understands the nitty-gritty um technical aspects of this.
Sir, I'll have to stop you. Sir, I'll have to stop you. Your five minutes is finished and we have to move on, okay? So.
All right, that's fine.
Any, any questions for this gentleman? Nothing? Okay, so, uh, we'll call back the uh agents. Could you please come back and, and, and answer those questions if you have any uh comments?
Yes, absolutely, and I appreciate everyone taking the time to provide their comments and I'll, I'll do my best to go through what I heard. Um, and hopefully my answers are satisfactory, so. Um, the very first comment had to do with changes to the plan. Uh, that, that is correct and I did not mean to omit that. Um, three parking spaces, not two, but three parking spaces were added on the south side of the building. Um, those are in an existing driveway. Uh, it's again, not really a change to the site, it's, it'll effectively just be painting the parking stripes on the ground. Um, and to that point, it answers other part, questions related to parking. So there was a comment about um this application reducing the amount of parking on the lot. Um, we added those three spaces based on comments we previously heard. So we brought it up from sixteen, which was what the original submission showed. We are now up to nineteen spaces. There are currently nineteen spaces on the property. So there will be no change in total parking and the parking complies with the zoning bylaw. So a- as far as those uh concerns related to the parking supply go, uh, we're not actually changing the, the total supply on the site. Um, there was a comment uh relating to a variance for eighty-five percent more lot area. Um, a number of comments in fact, and, and they're absolutely correct. By reading the bylaw, you know, it, it says it will be a, a maximum of fifteen hundred square meters and we're closer to twenty-seven hundred. Um, but the reality is that this is one property. This is, in my view, a technical uh variance. There's, there's nothing we can do short of severing up the land to, to reduce the lot area. We're simply recognizing the fact that it is the size that it is today. Um, to further chop it up would be a completely separate process, a separate application and have fundamentally different impacts on, on the property. So I just wanna make that clear. It's, it appears a large variance, but it is just recognizing the existing condition. Um, trying to find uh some of the others. So there was comments regarding uh noise uh from the playground. I mean, noise from children playing outside, I can understand to some people that, that may be a bit disruptive. There is also a park across the street that they'll be using, so it won't exclusively be the, the playground and it's not much different from the way a park functions in terms of the noise that, that would be generated and that noise will be restricted to the daytime hours. They, they aren't operating at midnight, there are no children running around at ten P M. It will be fairly typical operational hours for a community center of this nature. Um, I believe it will be something in the range of eight to six P M, eight A M to six P M, uh, fairly typical. Don't hold me to those exact time slots because I'm not the one running it, but, but that is the general idea. Um, there's also a comment regarding the lights from the parking lot. I would note that, again, that's an existing condition. We are working with an existing building and existing property and while I can appreciate that lights coming into the property are, um, you know, distracting and, and perhaps not uh enjoyable. You know, that is an existing condition and, and we're not really changing that. So whether, whether this application is approved or not, that will not change the, the situation with the lights and I think moving forward, you know, you, it would be possible to speak with the operators to see, you know, potentially there's a solution there. Um, I don't think that solution pertains to these variances, but, but I think it's worth noting. Um, I'm just taking a look here. Um, there was a comment about why this, this needs to move and generally to the councillor's letter. Um, I mean, I can't speak for, for uh former councillor Fillion. Um, you know, he, he clearly made uh an error in describing the location of the site. There, there is no question about where this site is located. Um, so, you know, I, I don't, I don't put too much stock into that particular uh uh typo. I don't think it affects the merits of the application. Um, but why the centre needs to move is that the current location really doesn't meet the needs for, for, for the children that it serves. This site is much better suited to accommodate those needs and the addition that the variances would facilitate um will make that possible. It's a relatively small addition. It is only fifty-nine square meters, much smaller than a home. Um, there's already an existing building that it will attach to. I think the overall impacts are, are going to be negligible to, to the neighbours um a- and the surrounding neighbourhood and um, I'm just seeing my time tick down, so, you know, I, I know I didn't get to quite everything, but I appreciate your time and if there's anything else you'd like me to talk about, I can, I can elaborate.
You covered, you covered your five minutes, thank you. So let's see what the.
Yep.
See if the members have any question. Uh, do you have any question, Mister Khan?
Thank you, Mister Chair. My question to Mister Weeks is, sir, give me a very short answer. Who owns and operates this land?
My understanding is that it is owned by the city of Toronto. It will be operated by Shining Through Centre for Children with Autism.
Okay, any?
Okay, thank you. And the other question that I have, uh, it was also raised previously. Why the transportation services did not comment?
They did comment, perhaps not in the, in the standard format. Um, we worked with them to resolve the parking variance because there is no variance and, and they acknowledged that and we submitted their written comments which acknowledged that they have no comments because there is no transportation-related variance. That should be in the file.
Okay.
Their comments are dated this uh, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
An- any other question? I don't see the uh faces, could you please remove that uh sheet there? Okay, any other question? No? Can I have a motion then, please? Mister Cat?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, I, I accept the explanations provided by the uh, by the agent Mister Weeks and uh I'm gonna put forward a motion to uh accept the application uh without condition.
Thank you. Second? Misses, Miss Tharodi seconding, are in favor? Opposed? Okay, two opposed and two for. Okay, so I'll uh, I looked at the, I looked at the application. I, I, on the description of who owns it, I had a question about two and three story. And the three story was explained that is triggered, is a technical one, triggered by the mad, mad room that is basically above the uh, the basement and, and, and technically it's, it's considered as a, as a first story and that's what triggered the three story. Therefore, I have no problem with the application and I uh, I join the uh, uh motion to approve the application. So sir, your application is approved with no conditions.
Thank you.
Number four here, which is two two four Briar Hill Avenue. Two two four Briar Hill Avenue, we have here uh Andrew Palumbo.
Yes, good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the committee and committee of adjustment staff. My name is Andrew Palumbo and I am the agent for two two four Briar Hill Avenue. My address is thirty-eight Betty Nakle Street, Toronto, Ontario.
Thank you. So we have here is an addition and in, in last with apartment. Uh, I understand the uh, the um we have here correspondents from January thirty confirms the, the design changes and removal of the second suite. So please give us, because we have here that, one, two, three more speakers and give us a five-minute presentation so we can move on.
Absolutely, Mister Chairman. I'll try to be brief and keep my presentation focused on the revisions made to the proposal uh since the original submission back in February of twenty twenty-two, about a year ago, as well as the corresponding four variances that are required to implement the, the proposal as revised. So essentially, uh, since the original proposal, uh, the revisions have been made to really try and scale down the proposed rear extension for the subject site. Previously, the proposal contemplated a full three-story extension which proposed rear extensions to all three floors of the existing dwelling. But since then, uh, the following revisions have been made and the intent of these revisions was to really try to work within the existing building footprint to the greatest extent possible so as to mitigate impacts on the surrounding neighbourhood. Uh, so firstly, uh, the third-story extension has been reduced to only the extent of the existing second-story rear main wall. So effectively, uh, this extension just serves to square off the existing half-story at the uppermost level of the existing dwelling and in order to make for a more efficient and functional full third story. So just to clarify, uh, the proposed third story is not introducing a brand-new upper level to the dwelling, but rather it's a revision that works within the existing building footprint to make a full third story. As a result, the dwelling will maintain the same look and feel from the streetscape and it will actually mirror the existing three-story flat roof going to the immediate east of the subject site at two 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 Briar Hill Avenue. Uh, secondly, the proposal now only considers a twenty-two-point-eight-square-meter ground-floor extension which extends beyond the existing rear wall of um, the, the main rear wall of the dwelling. So essentially, the ground-floor extension is the only element of the revised proposal that's actually contemplating brand-new G F A that actually goes beyond the existing building footprint at this site. Otherwise, as I just mentioned, the proposed third-story rear addition remains within the existing footprint and the proposed basement G F A is approximately only four square meters larger than the existing basement and this is as a result of modifying and squaring off the existing sunroom in order to make way for a new rec room. Uh, the intent of reducing the scale of the proposal to just a ground-floor extension, it also helps to break up the overall amassing of the building and it avoids tall overpowering sidewalls in comparison to the original proposal. Uh, further, this extension does not require the removal of any trees in order to facilitate the extension and as per, this is as per the site survey and the tree declaration form that have originally been submitted and are on file with this application. So as a result of these revisions and in comparison to the original proposal, the F S I variance has improved and reduced from point six-two to point five-four F S I. One thing I should quickly clarify is to keep in mind that the existing F S I of the existing dwelling is point four-three. Um, and in addition, the previous, there was a previous variance required to address total number of platforms and that's been removed through the complete elimination of a third-story rear deck that was originally proposed. And this was to address privacy and overlook issues that were previously raised. Uh, apart from the F S I variance, the remaining three variances are all tied to the overall building height. Uh, firstly, the proposed ten-point-three-seven-meter height measured to the highest point of the building. Again, this reflects the current height of the existing dwelling. So this is a variance that's very technical in nature. The building itself at its highest point is not getting any taller than it already is. In addition, part of the existing roof uh beyond the existing half-story is already a flat roof. But again, this proposal contemplates squaring off this half-story to make a full third story. Um, sorry, I lost my train of thought here. Uh, and that this, uh, with this part being the actual flat roof portion of the extension. But again, this doesn't introduce any new condition in terms of height that's already present at the existing dwelling and in this neighbourhood and tries to build upon what already exists and what's already clearly visible from the streetscape in the surrounding area. The variance to allow a third story is technical in nature, given the existing half-story at the uppermost third-story level of the house and the existing dwelling. Again, it's just proposed to now be full, more functional and efficient and squared off, as I've just mentioned. And as such, and just to wrap up, as you can see my time here, and it's been a very long day, the proposal as revised has made substantial efforts to reduce the overall scale and amassing of the proposal. And apart from the proposed ground-floor extension, the revised proposal works within the existing building footprint to minimize impacts. As a result of the revised proposal, there are no additional corresponding built-form variances such as setback reductions on any sides and there's no variances required to increase the building length or depth at all, which suggests that the proposal does not necessarily represent an overdevelopment on this lot. Rather, it represents an appropriate redevelopment that maintains and respects and reinforces the existing physical character of this neighbourhood by deploying the new G F A in a sensitive manner that works, as I've mentioned throughout this presentation, primarily within the existing footprint of the dwelling. And lastly, um, as far as I can see, there have been no new comments from any city departments or agencies except for Ravine and Natural Feature Protection and they've essentially provided the same standard comment that they've provided in line with the original proposal, um, which is a typical prime requirement for the condition uh and would be a condition should this proposal be approved. So overall, just to wrap up lastly, it is my opinion that the proposed four variances meet the four tests for a minor variance under the Planning Act. Represent good planning, it should be approved by this committee. Thank you very much for your time and happy to answer any further questions.
Boy, you go exactly on your five minutes, you really. I'm impressed how much you, how much you put in five minutes. You put a lot of stuff there. Okay, so.
Yes, that was difficult, but I, but I tried.
Yeah, you wrote it, let me speak here. Okay, anyways, we have Bryn and Bonnie Joint, are you there? Brian?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, can you please uh, uh, state your name and address for us, please?
Sure, my name is Bryn, B R Y N, Joint, J O Y N T. My address is two thirty-eight Briar Hill.
Okay, so please tell us what's your concern about this application?
Well, the first, first thing I'm gonna start off with is, is that um, um, I don't believe that the Committee of Adjustment should be in the business of negotiating variances. So I don't believe that the, the application should be um considered relative to the original very egregious application that was subsequently deferred or, or withdrawn. Um, the standard is the bylaw, not the previous submission. And so regardless of, of the so-called improvements on the original application, the variances are still um very material. Um, so then I wanna turn to a couple of technical points. Um, one, um, I don't, I think the onus is on the applicant to ensure that their, their submission is complete at the time it's originally submitted. Um, I found it difficult that the only submission in favor of this application was, was a consultant, a paid consultant, a hired gun, if you will. And they submitted their, their, um, their filing at the eleventh hour on the last day, which didn't give the community an opportunity to really comment or evaluate their thoughts. I did submit a letter. I'm hopeful that the committee will, will see that, that filing for what it is. Um, essentially a hired gun. Um, so at a minimum, I think this application should be deferred on that basis so that everyone can evaluate the full submission. Um, the second thing on a technical basis is that there is one set of neighbours that is not able to participate on this call. There is a very narrow window between when the notice came out and when the meeting date was and this um set of neighbours is travelling and they're not able to comment. Um, but they are perhaps the most adversely affected by this potential application. Um, Stacy Curtis and Marissa Richmond, um, they filed an application to increase their G F A on their home up to uh point five-one and that application was denied by this committee. So I think it would be um helpful if they had an opportunity to address this particular application to the committee. So for that reason, I think it should be deferred until such times as they're available. And then the lastly, in terms of the technical points, is as you mentioned, there was a, an, a Jan- January thirtieth modification to the application where originally it made reference. there was a a January thirtieth modification to the application where originally it made reference to an in-law suite. Now, I recognize that that's now been adjusted, but clearly two days before. I think that it's incumbent upon the applicant to make sure that their submission is complete and accurate at the time of submission, so that people can evaluate and comment on a complete application. So for that reason, it should be deferred at a minimum. Turning to my substantive points, again, coming back to, I think it's important that this committee recognizes consistency and equity in its decision making. I'm not clear on what's changed in terms of bylaws or plan, why this application is unique or different to previous applications. Again, Stacy Curtis and Marissa Richmond, they filed an application for point five one. Their home is on the ravine as well, and it was rejected. The reasons for the rejection was it was not consistent with the general intent and purpose of the official plan. It was not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. It was not considered desirable for the appropriate development of the land. And it was, in the opinion of this committee, the variances were not minor. So I'm unclear as to how these variances are any different or this application's any different. And on that basis, it should be rejected on the basis of consistency and equity of decision making. And then my last point in terms of substantive points is I just question who benefits from this application being approved? This application does nothing to increase the housing stock of our community. It is simply a size issue. Maximum size equals maximum value to increase the return on investment. I'm not aware of anyone else other than the applicant that benefits from this being approved. I am aware of of our community. There are multiple people that have submitted up letters of objection. There are multiple people on this call that are fighting. This community has fought consistently to protect the ravine and protect the community. And this application should be rejected because it simply hurts more people than it benefits. And it can it creates a alarming precedent. The variances simply are not minor. It's not consistent with the bylaws and should be rejected in its entirety. And at a minimum, it should be deferred until such times as the technical points I made referenced to could be addressed in a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for this speaker? No? Okay, so we have one more speaker, actually two more. Howard Bernstein and Melanie Glantz. Anyone there?
I am. It's Howard Bernstein. I live at two thirty Briar Hill.
Thank you.
We're three doors to the west of two twenty four.
Okay, so please tell us your concerns here.
Well, first, I echo my neighbor Bryn Joint's comments, you know, both substantively and also his prudent suggestion that a minimum this application be deferred. But having said that, I think this application fails entirely on its merits. And, you know, we're appreciative of the opportunity this evening to add our voice to the fierce neighborhood opposition to each of the four requested variances. Briefly, we've lived on Briar Hill for more than sixteen years. And during this time, we and our neighbors have enjoyed and respected the city of Toronto bylaw protected ravine setting in which we're fortunate to live. We were first made aware of the applicant's latest proposal when we received what I consider to be the late notice of this hearing. And we are, for the second time, being asked to consider an untested proposal that was not discussed beforehand with neighboring homeowners. You know, had the applicant made the effort, it would have been clear that the requested proposal continues to conflict with the high value that the neighborhood is historically placed on the unique and protected ravine setting, which respectfully, the applicant has entirely ignored in its application. It's the defining characteristic of our neighborhoods. And, you know, the fact that they didn't address it is indicative of, you know, their failure to appreciate why, you know, people such as ourselves and our other neighbors are speaking here tonight. But specifically, variances one, two, and four, which we oppose, would see the building height decrease by more than thirty three percent of the permitted limit, nine point six meters versus seven point two meters. In practical terms, the unprecedented addition of an extra story would effectively bring the story count at the back of the house, the side facing the ravine, to four, not three stories. The ground level floor at the back being a walkout. We point, you know, kindly point you to figure three in our submission, which should make that clear. You know, respectfully, this is unprecedented, both in both the immediate and broader neighborhood physical character context. The proposal neither reinforces nor respects the physical character of this existing neighborhood, and specifically those properties in the immediate context of the ravine with walkout or at-grade basements. And kindly refer you to figures four to nine in our submission. The third and final variance, which we also oppose, would result in the maximum FSI increasing by an astonishing one hundred and fifty four percent from zero point three five to zero point five four times the lot size. So our our understanding is that no ravine adjacent property in Briar Hill has been permitted to increase its FSI to this label wave level. As Mr. Joint rightfully pointed out, our respected neighbors at two forty four Briar Hill, you know, as noted in their letter of objection, were limited to zero point four zero times. So the question remains, what has changed? I think the answer is also unchanged, which is nothing. Like this briefly, we understand that higher GFAs have been permitted near Avenue Road. However, we respectfully submit these are not determinative with respect to two twenty four Briar Hill. Three fifty four Briar Hill, for example, is not located near the ravine protection zone. Rather, it's situated near Avenue Road. We understand that the city encourages higher density near higher order transit. While a laudable goal, it's not an objective applicable to two twenty four, which is located a distance away from Avenue. And my to my understanding is don't zone differently than two twenty four. You know, just the other couple of points I'd like to make are that the official plan treats the north and south sides of Briar Hill differently with respect to density, and such standards need to continue to be respected. We note that under chapter four, the official plan, development and established neighborhoods needs to respect and reinforce the existing physical character of the particular neighborhood.
Sir, you five minutes is over, and we have to move on. Can you please summarize?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, thank you. These are important points. I I think the point I last point I wanted to make in submitting that the variances need to be refused is that the proposal fails to rep respect and reinforce the existing physical characteristic of the neighborhood, specifically with respect to configuration of lots, prevailing height, scale, density of nearby homes, prevailing patterns of rear rear yard setbacks, continuation and preservation of special landscape features. The list goes on. Thank you.
Sorry, hold a second. Any question for the speaker? Okay, so we have another Catherine Well, yeah, we are. Okay. We have one more speaker, Catherine Howell and Helmut Hawk. Anyone there?
Yes.
Okay, could you please state your name?
My name is.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Catherine How. My name is Catherine Howell, and my husband Helmut Hawk and I live at two, two, eight Briar Hill.
Thank you.
Two houses west of the subject property.
Okay, so could you please tell us anything different information?
Okay, well, we have lived here for six years, and we were immediately attracted to this property because of the unique ravine setting, which is which is pretty fantastic while right in the middle of the city. And that really is the 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 appealing thing about this part of Briar Hill Avenue. So when we purchased and renovated our home, we respected the zoning bylaws and made improvements to our home while keeping with the physical characteristics of neighboring homes and being respectful of the ravine setting. This ravine is unique. It's a bit of wilderness tucked into an already very densely populated neighborhood in Toronto. The benefits derived from trees are indisputable, calming for people, habitat for wildlife, cleaning and cooling the air. When we were renovating our home, the city of Toronto urban forestry was extremely concerned about any removal of trees that could increase the risk of erosion and irreversible damage to the ravine. So how is it possible now that the city is now prepared to endorse the building of an addition that will significantly significantly encroach on the ravine? The city's official plan treats the north side of Briar Hill differently than the south side, specifically with respect to density standards. This reflects the uniqueness of the immediate properties which are situated at the south end of the Litton Park ravine system. The ravines bounded by Briar Hill Avenue on the south, Courtley Boulevard on the north and west, and Rosewell Avenue on the east. Prevailing built form of residential properties in the immediate neighborhood are predominantly two story detached homes. These homes are medium sized and fit in with the character of the neighborhood. This is not a neighborhood for large homes. In today's extremely expensive housing market, it makes sense to have a good number of small to medium sized homes which are affordable. The proposed development would result in a structure that significantly encroaches into the ravine protection zone. The floor space index variance request of point five four, which is yes, reduced from originally point six two, is still fifty five percent larger than what is allowed and much too large for this specific property. The proposed development would add another story and result in four stories at the rear of the house facing the ravine, which is unprecedented. We believe there are no other homes that back onto the ravine that have four stories. It is very unfortunate, the people who purchased two, two, six Briar Hill this past summer. It's between us and the the house that's asking for the variances. They are non-residents, and they are so they are silent on this matter. There's nobody living there. The previous owners submitted a seven page objection letter to the committee of adjustment in response to the original application of May two thousand and twenty two. We are very concerned that approval of this application would set a bad precedent for our neighbor to do the exact same thing and potentially destroy the natural beauty and health of the ravine. So in summary, we support good development. In our view, the requested variances are not appropriate for this site, and approval of these variances go against the intent of the city's ravines and natural features protection bylaw and are in contravention of the city's official plan and existing zoning bylaw. So for these reasons, we oppose this application and expect this committee will see it the same way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any question for the speaker? So we'll get we'll get back the agent and, okay, Mr. Palumbo. Can you can you come back and please address the concerns that you just heard?
Can can everyone hear me?
Yeah, you're. Yeah, do you wanna you want you heard what's happening? Could you please address the concerns? The agent Andrew Palumbo, are you still there? Mr. Andrew Palumbo, are you still there?
All right, go ahead. And everyone, I first of all, I want to sincerely apologize that of all the here, the last the last one of the day, and this has to happen. I'm very sorry, just just generally speaking. Firstly, okay, so obviously, through a lot of these comments that we've heard from from the surrounding neighbors, there are other concerns with impacts to the ravine. One thing that we failed to understand, I'm not sure what the issues actually are in terms of the actual proposal before the committee itself. But relative to the way the GFA and the way this proposal has been revised in scale, I'm still trying to understand actual concerns relative to impacts to the ravine, other than just saying there's impacts to the ravine. One thing I and again, because this application does get circulated, it was circulated with the original proposal and along with the revised proposal that's before the committee to the this evening. And one thing that I that is conclusive is that none of the city departments or external agencies have provided any comments relative to concerns or with impacts or otherwise to the ravine. So that being said, even with the original proposal, it's difficult to respond to issues that are being identified when we don't really know what the issues actually are, apart from the extension just being closer towards the ravine, but none of which actually triggers any variances with respect to either building length or setback or encroachment further closer to some identified ravine limit. Like, these are not known. This is not known to actually understand what needs to be addressed in terms of these concerns. So I got I'm not trying to dismiss it, but I'm actually just trying to better understand what the actual impacts are, other than just the extension just being there and where it is. And again, it was this extension is proposed at the ground floor because in order to avoid amassing impact at the second and third levels that would obviously provide more taller overpowering walls to the adjacent neighbors. So again, the revised design tried to be sensitive toward that fact. Again, as I mentioned through my presentation, the design was very focused, the redesign, I should say, the revised proposal was focused very much so on elements of the dwelling that already exist. So basically, the again, a half story is nothing new that that already exists on the site. There's already an existing half story visible and present at this dwelling. And it is it's it's clearly visible from the streetscape. And the proposal is obviously just proposing to square off that floor, so it's a full third story. Is there can everyone hear me? I see people laugh. I don't know what's going on. I can hear myself. I can hear echoes. I'm not sure. Can everyone still hear me?
We hear you. It's okay. Keep going.
Okay, sorry, sorry. And unfortunately, I can't speak to the details of other applications or why they were rejected. What I do know is earlier this evening, just two hundred and fifty meters west of the site, there was an approval for a dwelling on the north side of Briar Hill Avenue for up to an increased FSI of point six five. Again, that's not necessarily relevant because each application is evaluated on its own merits. But it does speak to the character in the area overall. And in the planning justification letter, I made attempts to show that when you look at other dwellings and other examples in this neighborhood from the streetscape, it is clear that a three level built form is something that's very clear from the street level. This is nothing new to this, not introducing any new conditions. Again, the height variance that's needed for this application is the ten point three seven meters, that thirty seven additional centimeters. That again, that's representative of an existing condition. That's not new additional height. That's not brand new. That's already in existence. So one thing I should also clarify, because there were, even though it has no relevance to the actual application itself, but as I the owner does plan to move in, this is not an investment property, as as has been the the assumption. I think that covers most of what I would I wrote down here. And then, sorry, again, I apologize for the difficulty in having to speak on a cell phone through a speaker. I think that covers most of what I would, I wrote down here and then, sorry, again, I apologize for the difficulty in having to speak on a cell phone through a speaker, but uh, I hope everyone heard that and I'm happy to try and answer any questions as I hear them.
Okay, thank you. You hear us, yeah? Do you hear us?
Very faintly, but yes.
Okay, so let's see what the members have to say, if they have any question. Members, any question for this speaker? You heard the neighbors, you heard the speaker, you heard the agent and uh, we have to, we have to move on. So if you have any questions, uh, fine, if not, let's make a motion and move on.
Still on the YouTube live. There's eight people watching.
Who's speaking now? Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't hear anything. Is everyone still there?
Excuse me, could you just, we're in committee right now. So just hold on until we see what the members have to say. I don't hear what, so anyone, anyone, any comment or, or questions? Members, do you hear me? Do you hear me? So, so what's going on? You're right, they don't hear. Do you hear me? Nazila, do you hear, do you hear us? Apparently, you don't hear us, huh? Apparently, we're asking questions and you guys don't hear us. That's it. Okay, because we're. I see. Yeah, okay. I, I hear you guys. Okay, that, that's a, that's a good, that's a good idea. Good idea. Okay, thank you. Okay, there's suggestion, we have five minutes break, they need five minute break. Well, they need five minute break, the people. Okay, five minutes. Five minutes break, yeah. That's it. Five minutes break and see what happens.
Members, can you hear me now?
Okay, they're hearing us. Okay. Members, if you hear us now, could you please, uh, oh. Okay. Three minutes?
Andrew, can you, can you hear me?
I'm, oh, can you hear me? I'm speaking right now. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Yeah.
I can, I can hear you. Yes, I can hear you on the other end, correct?
Okay, okay, we've got it. Yeah, we've got it reconnected.
Okay, if, if we get disconnected again, can I, can you call me back?
Yes, I'll call you back.
Sorry.
Okay, so what's going on?
Okay, I can hear him on there now. So for summary.
Okay, but as far as the members here, they, they said, they said they can hear, so let's put them on again.
Member kid, can, can you hear us?
Do you hear us, yeah?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Okay, can you, can? Well, remove that, that thing. I don't see them. I have to see them. Okay, perfect. Okay, members, do you hear me now? Do you hear me? Okay, so, any question for this gentleman who covered the um, uh, he, he spoke after the, the neighbors? Any questions to him? We lost Nazila, eh? So do you have any?
She'll be back in a sec.
Okay, here Nazila. Okay, any question for this gentleman? Because if you don't have any questions.
Are you talking, Mr. Chair, about Mr. Palumbo? Question for Mr. Palumbo?
I'm talking to all of you. If you have any question to the gentleman, if you don't have any question, then I need a motion.
I, I don't think he got to finish his um, presentation to us. He was cut off in the middle.
Oh, he did, he finished, yeah, he finished it on the phone. Maybe you didn't hear it, yeah.
No, we didn't hear it at all.
Yeah, he, he came back and, okay, well, um. Yeah, could you, could you get him on the phone, please? Eh, eh, okay, uh.
I'm, can you hear me? I, I'm back.
Yeah, okay, we hear you. Could you please make a very short one? Summarize what you said before because we had a technical problem here and the members didn't hear anything. So could you please make a summarize, summarize your, your, your thoughts?
Yeah, sorry, it's been a very long day. I'll try to be very brief. Okay, in response to all, I want to thank the, the, the neighbors for providing their commentary. Um, again, one thing I just, I, I still trying to grasp is the actual concerns with the impacts to the ravine, again, because when your application was originally circulated, um, there were no comments from urban forestry, city planning staff, or even ravine and natural feature protection that mentioned anything about um, concerns or, or negative adverse impacts to the ravine as a result of even the original extension, but even with the the proposal as revised, as it's been scaled down, there have also not been any comments that we, like, from the city departments or otherwise that we were even able to respond to at this hearing tonight. So again, I'm just, I'm not trying to be ignorant, I'm not trying to be, trying to turn a blind eye to this, but I'm just actually trying to understand what the impacts directly are to the ravine that the neighbors are concerned about, other than just the proposal being there in place the way it's been proposed. Because again, as I've mentioned through my original presentation, the revised proposal tried as much as possible to be much more modest and gentle in nature by only building upon the existing footprint at the upper level with the third story extension. Again, that's an existing condition with that upper half level. Now it would be proposed to be a full third level, a full third story. And again, this is a mirror, a mirror of what exists immediately to the east adjacent at two-two-two Briar Hill Avenue and this is again, a proposal that when you look at it from the streetscape and even in the immediate and the broader context, especially within the immediate, it will look exactly as it does today. The existing height, the, the variance required for the height of ten point three-seven, that's a variance that applies to the existing current height of the existing dwelling. So again, these variances, although they may seem numerically like they're impactful, they are very, they're more so technical in nature and again, try to focus more on the existing structure and the existing footprint as much as possible. Uh, the ground floor extension, again, breaking up the massing and not having a full-blown three-story extension that extends at all three levels, this obviously softens the impacts to the surroundings. And again, that extension is, is, it doesn't require and necessitate any further set, um, side yard or rear yard setbacks or any variances to building length suggesting that maybe it's too long or too close to its adjacent uh, properties. Uh, which is why, again, it was, it's been, it's been proposed to be constructed as per the plans. Um, and I get, uh, one, I, there's a couple of other comments here that I'll just try and touch upon. They're a little more of a one-off nature. I can confirm, even though it's not relevant to the hearing, just to, to clarify for the, the neighbors that spoke, the owner actually does plan to move into this house and it's not an investment property, as I understand it. And I actually cannot speak to the reasons why the other application originally got rejected at point five-one. I don't know the details of that application because each application fails or passes on its own merits. All, and I do know tonight, early this evening, just down the street about two hundred and fifty meters west, a proposal for an FSI of point six-five uh, did get approved on the same, on the same north side of Briar Hill Avenue. Again, but that's sort of, it, it, it's, it's more about the existing planning merits of the existing application. Is that different? So I don't see a timer, I don't see a timer ticker countdown, so I.
Okay, let's see, let's see if the members need some more information. Are you, you heard what, what has been said? Or we do it all over again? Are you hearing us, members? Do you hear me? Okay, all right, so any question for the gentleman? No questions? Do we have, do you have a motion? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After listening to the agent and other people and having no staff recommendations, I find variance number one, number four, that is the building height, exceeds the maximum building height limits. And variance number two exceeds the maximum two-story and it is not a character of the neighborhood as well as it is amassing and density improvement. Varies number three, thirty-five percent more than the maximum allowed. All these are not minor variances. These failed the four test and therefore I move this application be refused.
Okay, I have a motion here to refuse the application. Do I have a second? I don't have a second. Therefore, the motion failed. Do I have another motion, please? Ms. Sankar, please go ahead.
I, first of all, appreciate the diversity of this committee and our, our thinking about things and um, you know, I really did hear what the neighbors said and in fact, um, honestly, after hearing them, I, I was sort of ready to say, okay, that's it. But upon closer look at this application and looking at sort of the justification letter that had been sent in and, and understanding that some of this is in part uh, technical and existing and, and also seeing that um, there are homes within uh, the area that have that sort of existing massing. Um, you know, I, I understand um, that, you know, I, I'm hoping this is not creep, but you know, I, I feel that there is some justification here and I don't know that it's going to be that uh, different uh, once already built. And so for that reason, and, and I respectfully uh, really appreciate what the, the neighbors had said because it really gave some time to think and consider this and I, I really was there for a moment, but I'm gonna put forward a motion uh, to um, accept this application and make it subject to um, I believe it's ravine and natural features protection. Uh, they had a specific report uh, and make it subject to those conditions. And that's my motion.
I believe the last one has a forestry, is that correct?
Is it forestry or ravine and?
Well, there is a letter there. If you look at the letter, uh, there is a forestry number one.
Okay. So I'll make it subject to um, urban forestry.
Okay, your, your, your protection of ravine is okay too. Okay, your, your question?
Yeah.
Is okay? And second, do you have second? Who's seconding this? Miss, uh, Miss Ataro, the seconding? All in favor? Okay, opposed? Oppose Mr. Mr. Khan? Okay, so sir, your application is approved subject to the uh, to the uh, ravine uh, que- uh, protection? And that's, I don't see any other, any other condition? And thank you.
Thank you very much and sorry for delaying you all.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a nice day. Now I, now we need a motion.
Yeah, usual, thank you.
Need a motion to terminate. Mr. Khan wants to terminate. Second? Second? Ms. Sankar seconding, all in favor? Okay, we finished. We finished at seven, uh, seven forty-five.